Are we ready to call the meeting back to order with the mic that comes on? Bam. All right, welcome back, everybody. Hope you had a really good lunch. I've got chocolate, so we're going to happy afternoon now. We're going to go to appeal number three, 2016-932. Looks like Madeline is going to be presenting on this one. And if you guys want to just take a seat up front here, when she's done with her presentation, we'll have you come up. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Madeline Flandreau, Planner Two. I'm presenting Appeal 2016-932 for Robert and Cherie Schaefer's denial of their commercial cannabis registration. On July 11th, Robert and Cherie Schaefer submitted an application for 14,375 square feet of mixed light commercial medical cannabis cultivation for their site located at 5855 Clements Place in Valley Springs, which is part of Rancho Calaveras, APN 070-009-009, which is highlighted in red. The reason for denial, the registrations were denied on August 3rd, 2017, for failure to comply with Section 1795.170(a) .2, which is other state, federal, and local laws. I included county aerial imagery from August 13th, 2016, to show just a narrow view of the property and that they were indeed cultivating last year. On five separate occasions, Calaveras County Animal Services was called to 5855 Clements Place for various issues related to the Schaefer's dogs. They were called on December 18th, 2015, March 1st, 2016, March 14th, 2016, April 6th, 2016, and again on June 7th, 2017. I believe an officer from Animal Services is here today and can answer any questions you have. On June 7th, 2017, the Schaefer's were cited for three violations, two for a lack of licensing and one for control of the dogs. On June 7th, 2017, Cherie Schaefer signed a notice to appear, given to her by the animal control officer, to appear at a hearing scheduled for July 24th, 2017. This is the copy of the notice. This July 24th, 2017 court date apparently did not happen. Along with the Schaefer's appeal letter, which was submitted to the Planning Department on August 18th, 2017, we received new information, including receipts showing that Cherie Schaefer had paid for the dog licenses, which brought her into compliance for the first two violations. On August 14th, there was a hearing, which the Schaefer's did attend, during which the courts dismissed the two violations for licensing as Mrs. Schaefer had proof of corrections. However, the third item for control of the dogs is set to be heard at a hearing for October 2nd, 2017. So our recommendation is that we continue the hearing for Appeal 2016-932 until October 12th, 2017, so we can learn of the outcome of the October 2nd court hearing for the dog control issues.
That caught me off guard. Sorry about that. Okay, so you're recommending that we wait until October to hear-
What the judge's outcome is regarding the violation for control and the data set for October 2nd.
And how would that change this hearing? If you, if they, so I guess specifically if they win their case, are you going to pull back the denial? And then we won't hear it? How would that work?
So the animal control laws of the county are that it's, Ethan will be here because he learned this inside and out, but my understanding is that it is a criminal offense. And in order to be found out of compliance, you actually have to be found guilty. You're presumed innocent until proven guilty. And so we don't actually have a violation of the law until after this hearing. So while there were citations that indicated they could be out of compliance, it was Ethan's recommendation that we really can't rely on that at this time until adjudication of that citation is resolved. There was another issue that was raised, and that is due with the special plan, Rancho Calaveras Special Plan, and the fact that it does not allow commercial activities, for the most part. There's small-scale residential occupation, home occupations that could be used. And there's the one location, the real estate office, that also was allowed. It's a valid point, however, that should have been addressed in the adoption of the ordinance. When you adopt a discretionary action, conditional use permit, zoning amendment, subdivision map, you need to make a finding of consistency with the general plan. For a ministerial permit, you don't typically have to do that unless you have something in your zoning code that says you need to be in compliance with the general plan to approve a building permit or a cannabis registration. So while there is a conflict between our ordinance and the general plan, the specific plan, the applicants, and there are three other applications in the Rancho Calaveras area, one that has been withdrawn, two others that are pending, they have relied upon the language of the ordinance. And it would be, I think, unfair, and I'm not sure necessarily legally appropriate, to deny the application based on the county's error of not considering that when we adopted the ordinance. The appropriate remedy for that would be someone to challenge the ordinance. And I think that since that's happened over a year ago, the timeframe for that challenge has long passed.
Does the ordinance have-
That it wasn't-
File a writ that it's out of compliance with the general plan. And so I believe that while it's a valid point, and if we-
Well-
In the future, we would need to make sure that we consider that in adoption of any ordinance.
I would just note that the grounds for denial, which was stated by planning and which is before us today, is obviously just the violation of other laws, being the animal, the county animal laws. And so it sounds as though planning is recommending a continuance. Other possible grounds for denial have been brought to the attention, you know, by the public. The Planning Commission certainly doesn't, can independently consider those, independently of, you know, the Planning Director, and would be able to add other grounds if it found appropriate. But that's moot today, obviously, if it's being continued.
Any oppositions on that?
No, we're waiting for a vote.
Okay.
Can I perhaps just speak kind of on our behalf? We are in compliance at this time as far as-
Okay, so we're not having your hearing, so you don't get to speak. And if you are going to speak, you have to come to the mic. So I think at this point, we just need to, if you'd like to come up and just make sure you go on the record with saying that you're good with waiting until October, that would be great.
Yes, we are fine with waiting until October.
And your name?
Cherie Schaefer.
Perfect. Okay.
My only issue is October 2nd is just a continued arraignment, so by October 12th, we're not going to have a decision from the judge.
I think what we're going to do is probably continue this until we have a decision rendered. Is that correct?
Well, that would be the intent.
Please state your name.
Rebecca Andal.
I would recommend, that would make sense if the reason that it's being continued is to wait for adjudication of the citation, then it wouldn't be prudent to bring it back without that occurring first.
So maybe the best thing to do is continue it off calendar. And I suppose that should the judge rule in favor of the Schaefer's, then we would rescind our denial and there'd be no need to bring it back.
Okay.
But I still have some question about the special plan. And I didn't understand exactly why, I mean, if somebody in Rancho Calaveras were in violation of the zoning ordinance, and they happened to be a cannabis grower, wouldn't, couldn't that be used to deny their permit?
We do require conformity to zoning requirements for any activity, whether it's, you know, construction of a house.
Right.
Yes. But we don't necessarily check for a general plan consistency. And we often have places where the general plan land use designation conflicts with the zoning, for whatever reason it shouldn't, but we do. We have an application pending right now where the zoning is commercial, but the land use designation is single-family residential.
Well, I certainly don't think that the Planning Department should have to check each of these parcels and say, oh, are they consistent with the general plan? But if it becomes clear that they are not, not consistent with the general plan, I don't-
I would say in normal circumstances, what we would do is amend the ordinance to fix that discrepancy. But given the fact that within a couple of weeks, we'll be considering a ban or a complete new ordinance-
But why isn't that a violation of local law, which under the ordinance is grounds for denial?
I don't recall if it's case law or if it's something in the government code, but I dealt with this previously before coming to this jurisdiction. And the determination was that unless you have something in your zoning code that specifically requires conformity with the general plan as a condition of issuing a permit, that the general plan conformity finding is applied at the approval of discretionary application only. And ministerial permits, which this is, you only look at the specifics of the ordinance that applies.
Well, could I ask that perhaps while we're continuing this for the other purpose, that you and county council take another look at-
We could certainly do that.
Whether that special plan consideration could go in? That'd be great.
Well, we can't alter the ordinance, so.
No, but whether that's necessary.
Couple of points. The 17.95.170(a) .2 says the Planning Director can invalidate a registration for any of the following reasons: other violations of federal, state, or local law are occurring on any parcel. It doesn't require a conviction in terms. I don't understand why it is the Planning Director can't look at a set of facts and decide, there's a violation here, I'm invalidating. I don't understand that it has to be a conviction. Doesn't matter here if we're going to continue it. But just for the record, I'm not sure I agree with your interpretation. The other thing I would say is I think we should have public comment on the request for a continuance because there are some people who might want to say some things about the special plan issue, and whether that ought to be appropriate.
So are there any other questions, or do you want to go straight to public comment?
Public comment.
All right. And just to clarify, this is public comment on the-
Continuance.
On planning's recommendation for a continuance.
Correct. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment on this?
Colleen Platt, MyValleySprings.com and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. We do not support the continuance. I think it should be discussed on the merits of what's before us, and I agree with Kelly that I think there's enough there in the violations existing and also in existing violations of the Rancho Calaveras Special Plan. That's, this is obviously not in conformance with the special plan or the general plan. It would be obvious to anybody coming up and submitting an application for discretionary application, this should apply to a ministerial application, too. I don't see any reason to allow commercial cannabis farms to be permitted in a residential area that does not allow that. This is just setting yourself up for lawsuits, and it's unfair to request for the public to file the lawsuit to make you conform to an existing law that's on your books.
Okay, but our resolution before us today wasn't being noticed about the special district. It was specifically on the animal control issue. So we would not be able to go into the hearing on the special district issue.
Okay, I just thought Kelly's point that he thought that 17.85.70 something rather that you quoted, that any violations were, could be looked at under the Planning Director's jurisdiction. So I thought that applied to the existing noticed issue here.
Your thoughts?
Well, I'd like to defer to Ethan on this. We've been advised by council that we should not and cannot rely on simply the citation by animal control to, as a reason for denial.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
With an ordinary code violation or a violation of a planning ordinance or zoning ordinance, basically the county says, you're guilty, we've made the prima facie case that you are, now it's your responsibility to prove to us that you haven't violated it. And that's how a code violation works, how a zoning violation works. However, dog bites are a criminal issue. A person is innocent until proven guilty. This is a criminal infraction. They have to go to a judge and be found guilty. Whereas if Peter says you violated provision of 17.95, then you have, and it's your job to uphold his determination. Whereas Peter can't say, you've committed a crime, because that's up for a judge to decide.
Well, I'm not sure I agree with that. I understand that only a judge can put people in jail and convict them of a crime. It does not follow that the Planning Director is powerless to make his own determination that there is a violation of a criminal law. He can't punish it, he can't convict him. But I don't understand why he couldn't, even taking into account the presumption of innocence, make that determination himself. But that's an issue for another day. The other issue, it seems to me, is whether a general plan, or a special plan for that matter, that's included within a general plan, is the kind of local law that he could find a violation of. And if you have an inconsistency between the zoning ordinance and the special plan, it doesn't seem fair to me to subject the Schaefer's, in this case, to the requirements of a special plan when the zoning permits what they're doing. That's my comment.
Yeah, as to the latter matter, I am not familiar enough with that area of law to be able to come to an opinion on it.
Neither am I.
But on the, on the question of the criminal violation, we could, under the approaches being suggested, we could decide, yes, they're in violation, and then have it turn out that they are not convicted of the crime. And I think that's, to use a very specific legal term, messy.
Yeah, I mean, because you guys could find out, decide here today, that the five calls that didn't result in citations were violations of animal control laws, but, and a judge has not passed any judgment on that, and they may not ever pass any judgment on that. And that just sort of seems odd to me when it's a crime that you guys are, this body is determining has occurred.
Well, I don't think we can do that, because it's the Planning Director that has to make that call, and the Planning Director is supporting a continuance. We can't do it, he has to do it. And I'm not opposed to a continuance. But I wanted to make clear on the record, the way, the way I read this, this section, I don't think a criminal conviction is a prerequisite.
So I mean, we've deferred to Commissioner Bocelli. Because he was wanting to turn his mic on and say something for us.
Essentially-
Your mic's not on.
I look at, I look at the word violation, and I don't see the word conviction. They are different. And we find violations all the time. That's our job. I don't care what the criminal court does, quite frankly, in this situation, I don't think it matters. If we find a violation, then we can find a violation. So I'm not so sure I'm agreeing with the continuance at all. By the way, I could not hear you very well, one of these things doesn't work, about the first two dogs. Did that get resolved?
There was a hearing, okay, August 14th, and the judge dismissed?
Yeah, dismissed.
Dismissed.
Okay, so it was just the third dog that was-
Yes.
And just to clarify, the staff report says that Cherie Schaefer failed to appear at the hearing?
Okay.
Because I understand what you're saying now, that hearing just didn't happen.
I haven't gotten a clear answer to that.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're supposed to be talking about the continuance right now?
I know.
We're getting into the process of hearing, so-
Just that we're going to be seeing this again, and maybe you can clarify that.
Well, I guess, but my bigger question would be, do we want to discuss this continuance specifically before we go into any specifics of the case?
Yeah. Fine.
That'd probably be appropriate. I don't have, if the commission as a whole feels that, you know, we should hear the case, and you want to hear the details of it, you know, I'm fine with that, we can move forward. But at this point, just not, having a clear understanding of all the complete history of the hearings, on the animal control hearings, and the fact that there is still an outstanding hearing to be held, we felt it was just appropriate to continue it.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take public comment, and then bring it back to the commission to discuss on what direction they want to go in. So any public comment?
Is it public comment now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was mistaken, I thought it was called earlier, so. Bill McManus from the Ban Committee. I tend to agree with Kelly and others that it's a violation. If, if animal control or whoever issued the citation went out and saw the condition that existed, and they made a determination that it warranted a citation or whatever they do at that time, they did it for good reason. And not only is it a public safety issue if you have dogs running around the neighborhood on the loose, but if it's, if it's a criminal, if you want to try to make it a criminal matter, it certainly qualifies for a lesser level, which could be a misdemeanor or whatever you want to call it. In any case, they'll have the chance to appeal that later, if, if they're actually prosecuted. But the terms of the urgency ordinance are pretty clear. It's a violation, and I think it's been said a couple times, and I completely agree.
So are you speaking in favor of a continuance, or no?
No, I think it should be, I think-
Well, I just need a clear answer, because right now we're talking about the continuance, and you're saying you think we should have the hearing.
I think, I think you should settle the matter now. I don't think there's any question about it. I don't know what you're going to clear up on October 12th. I think that the same conditions exist now that will exist on October 12th.
Okay. Thank you.
Vicki Mills, and I want to give some possible clarity to this. Ethan is right. When it comes to animal control, the citation is just basically a piece of paper. With our dog ordinances that we have currently, only a judge, a superior court judge at a hearing can decide whether a dog is dangerous, out of control, or anything else. Animal control citation does not work like any other citation. It takes a superior court judge to decide whether that dog is out of control. Animal control cannot decide that. Nobody else can decide that but a superior court judge at a hearing in this county. And that's according to our code.
So are you speaking for or against continuance?
I want a continuance, because until the court rules on this citation, on this animal, we have no way of knowing if it's truly out of control.
Okay.
Because it's up to the judge to decide.
Thank you, Vicki. If you could state your name for the record, that'd be great.
Jim Mosher.
Thank you.
I'm resident of Valley Springs. I do live on this street, Clements. I've been victimized by these dogs in the past, so the violation has occurred. There's been multiple occasions where I've actually almost shot the dogs, but I just couldn't do it. I do have a photo I can submit to show you guys, there where the dogs chased my wife and my daughter back into our garage on one occasion. I don't know if it's the one in question. I have filed many complaints with animal control over the issue, and tried not to take matters in my own hand. I understand that there is a court, pending court hearing, which, yes, they have the right to go in front of a judge, but the other issues did occur. They pled, I guess they pled guilty if they pay the fine, because that's how the system works. They didn't contest that, so therefore those violations did occur.
So are you speaking in favor of having the hearing today, or a continuance?
I want to continue the hearing, and I can continue more when it comes down to that.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to bring it back to the commissioners to decide what they'd like to do.
I think in this particular case, I would agree with the Planning Director, it would be appropriate to continue, because it is going to be heard by a judge.
Okay.
And we can just see what happens with the clarity of that decision.
Okay. I have mixed feelings, for more than a couple reasons. I'm sorry. But I'd kind of like to hear it today. I don't want to wait.
One more question about the first two dogs. Was Cherie fined? So was there, is that an effect of guilty plea?
She was, she was not fined, she had to pay transaction assessments.
So you don't know if-
And she had to pay a proof of correction.
The other two charges on the citation were for failure to license two dogs. Those are correctable citations, I mean, I sort of think of it as like a fix-it ticket. There was a, I think, a fee associated with doing that, but they were ultimately, at least according to the docket, dismissed because proof of having corrected, which is licensing, was produced to the court. So there was, there was a fine, or a fee, so to speak, associated with that, but it's, they were dismissed.
So it sounds like there's a violation out there on the other two dogs, violation's plural, and if, I forget his last name, Jim, his neighbor, I guess, is, his testimony is correct, and there's more to this than just the one dog.
Mrs. Andal, can you?
So technically, they only have two dogs. There is a citation on each dog for licensing, and that was correctable, under, the judge made it correctable, and they corrected that. The third citation was for one of the dogs that was not licensed, that was running loose around the neighborhood that we had multiple calls on. And that was for out of control, for control issue.
And that's the one that's set through October-
Yes.
-some time. The problem I see with the continuance is not only what I've already stated, but the fact that these things tend to not get resolved in a guilty or innocent, not guilty result. You see people doing Nolo pleas, you see, for whatever reason, never makes it. So we come back on 12th, and we still don't have a resolution, and now we've got potentially a dog out there. We got a violation, and we haven't done anything. So I have an oppose of continuance at this point.
What we're doing today is, I don't think it's going to have any effect on whether the dog will continue or has been, or whatever. We're determining whether there's a violation. And I, I agree with the director that we should continue it unless, I mean, if the director, it'd be a completely different case to me if the director were ready to say, I have proof of these violations, and I'm ready to present, and I have, you know, photographs, et cetera. As I understand, Director Maurer is basically saying, the proof is going to be at the, at the criminal hearing, and I don't think we're ready to decide all the facts in this case. And the criminal court will be deciding the facts, and I am for the continuance. Get it resolved there and come back to us.
Okay, well, that was good. Two to two. Kelly, can you read that chapter of the ordinance that you were talking about again, where you described the violation?
Yes, it's 17.95.170(a) .2. Says, "Registration of a medical cannabis cultivation site pursuant to this chapter may be invalidated by the Planning Director for any of the following reasons."
Two, other violations of federal, state, or local law, per and other than cannabis-related activities recognized as legal by the State of California and per and, are occurring on any parcel within the county in the ownership or possession of the registrant." And now we have a situation in which the planning director, who is the one to do the invalidating or denying, seeks a continuance.
Okay, so the only concern that I have is that Commissioner Bocelli brings up the fact that if something were to happen with these dogs in that neighborhood and we didn't take action here today, do we...
I mean, just as a reminder, going back to Commissioner Ladish's point, the decision in front of the planning commission today is about whether or not to uphold a denial of a cannabis registration application that, for better or worse, has no bearing on whether these dogs, which allegedly are roaming or not in control, will continue to be so or not. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, except for the fact that it's based on, are there violations on this registered gr...
Right. But I'm sorry, I understood what your comment to mean, that you expressed concern about the dog's behavior, which just kind of adds to the neighborhood, and for better or worse, the commission's decision does not impact that. That's all.
Okay. So I'm gonna give the vote to go with the director and legal counsel's advice to do the continuance until we have a ruling. So that'll make the vote three to. So we are gonna continue, and are we gonna do this to an uncertain date so that we can get a ruling? Because we don't know when that will be, or do you want a certain date?
Well, as I understand from the animal control officer, that these hearings are often continued or taken under advisement, so it'd probably be better than to schedule a hearing to wait, just do it off calendar.
Do it off calendar, okay.
And then reschedule it. So it'd be appropriate to have a motion and second vote on the continuance.
Okay. So does somebody would like to make a...
I move that we continue this matter to a date uncertain until after the criminal proceedings have been resolved, whether that means that they've been dismissed or there's a judgment. And I would include in that motion that there be a consideration and consultation between the county council's office and the planning director about the special plan issue and whether that should be a part of this proceeding.
Okay. Can we get a second on his motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, three to.
I would like to see the planning director and county council look at the ordinance in the special plan and...
We can go ahead and do that without a motion, so we'll make sure that it's done.
Yeah, I know, but I want to see it brought up sooner than later.
Okay.
All right, it's continued. Okay, thank you. So just quickly here, we have the procedures, adoption of the planning commission hearing procedures that is next on the agenda, but we also have an informational item after that, which is a compliance update. Would you like to hear that update since they're here and then they don't have to stay for the whole afternoon if they don't want to to hear about procedures, or do you... Yeah? Okay. So we're gonna move that up to now so that we can get an update on commercial cannabis registration 2016-804. And I think you're giving your own update. We don't have staff doing that for you.
I have a PowerPoint that's...
Okay, did you let staff know ahead of time you were doing a PowerPoint?
I did, yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Hello, planning commission and everyone. Thank you for allowing me to skip ahead in the timeframe there.
I didn't have to state your name for the record.
Oh, yeah. My name is Sarah Hodson. Thank you. So I'm just back here today to give you an update, progress report on the remediation that I've been doing at my property. So we have prepared a PowerPoint to just make a nice flow and not waste much of your time. So go ahead. So there are three main aspects of the remediation that I've been working on. The grading permit and SWIP, which is a storm water prevention monitoring program, the erosion control on the land, and the switch to tier three with the canvas general order by the water quality control board. So we'll go through each one, and then if you have any questions, just ask. So I turned in the grading permit for the remediation project to Public Works in late April, and then during the time I was waiting for that to be processed, I received a request from the planning department to coordinate a dual-site visit inspection from Code Compliance and the Water Board. And so we planned that at the earliest available date, which was August 25th. And meanwhile, the grading permit got sent from Public Works to Cal State Engineering for just a couple corrections, and then we did the site visit with Water Board. So when the Water Board came out, it was Tom Watts from Code Compliance and Robert Ditto from the Water Board, and we walked all around the property and did a really thorough inspection. He gave additional suggestions on erosion control that... to make everything better, and also expressed that the, basically, the scope of the work that had been planned in the initial draft of the grading permit needed to be expanded to include not just the grow site area, but an internal access road and the lower portion of the property where no plants are being cultivated. So because of that, we... I called up Cal State and explained, and we had to get the Cal State surveyor back out to the property to survey additional area, the road and the lower area. And then that information went back to Cal State, and then Cal State amended the grading plan to include all the additional area, basically. So we have an addition, an amended grading plan that's been finished and turned back into Public Works as of September 8th. And so now, at this point, all we're doing is waiting on the Public Works to give the final stamp of approval on the grading permit and any formal feedback from the Water Board related to the inspection that they did. So that's where the grading permit progress is at, at this point. Next slide. Okay, so also, in addition to the grading permit, there's the SWIP monitoring program. Oh, I forgot the binder. Did I? Oh, well, I forgot the binder. I was gonna bring it in and show you guys. But it's basically a storm water prevention program of monitoring where I do weekly inspections of the site to make sure, just to make sure all best management practices are in place and not failing or anything. And then when rain starts, I'll be, well, a professional from Cal State, the Cal State geologist, will be coming out anytime there's a rain event that's predicted at 50% or more prediction of rain. They will be coming out and sampling any water running through the property to test for pH and turbidity to make sure that there's no... The goal is to have no sediment runoff off of the property, which is the purpose of the erosion plan and the goal of the SWIP. So right now, it's kind of in a dormant state, but once the grading project begins, it will... I mean, I'm still doing the monitoring, but anyway, it will become an active grading site, and that SWIP will remain in place, and those requirements are imposed until the Water Board determines that the SWIP, or that the property is at least 70% stabilized and not, no longer a threat to water quality. And so Cal State, when they revised the grading plan to expand the area, they also revised the SWIP plan and submitted it to the Water Board. So everybody's coherent along the same, the same thing. So thanks. So this is a SWIP binder, and it's got a whole bunch of, it's got best management practices and forms for each monitoring occasion, and basically a big record of the process. Cool. So what's next in the grading is, so although I have yet to get the final stamp of approval on the grading permit, I've been in constant contact with the construction, Dan Backer Construction, who is going to be doing the grading work for the remediation. And Dan Backer is a local, highly qualified for the project. He, the company has been in business for many years, and they have, they have special experience in, like, erosion control and remediation. So I think I learned my lesson the first time, hiring the wrong guy for the job, and I really want to make sure to have the right person that knows what they're doing. They've dealt with SWIPs before, and I want to make sure that good people are doing this job. And so also, in addition to that, I have Mark's Seeding Company. They do hydro seeding, and a company called Total Site Management, who does additional erosion control for the whole site during construction projects, both on deck to come out and make sure that full erosion control is implemented during and after the grading project happens. We're going to reconstruct a new fence, a bigger fence outside of the entire area that's gonna be remediated so that we can keep up a continuous, maintain the continuous fencing around the site during the project. Dan Backer, I... He normally doesn't put people on his calendar until he has a grading plan in hand, but I've been talking with him consistently, and he understands that the high importance of this project starting on time. And so he has put me on his calendar, and as long as the permit goes through in time, he, his current projects will end, and he'll be able to come out mid to late October at the earliest, and we'll get started as soon as, as soon as he gets there. So that's where we are with that. Okay, so erosion control stuff. Basically, we have the initial grading plan by Cal State Engineering, and it showed, this is it right here. It's a little hard to see, but it shows fiber rolls, which are like wattle, straw, hay rolls, these things. Sean made an excellent visual. The little blue lines cover areas that we completed of the fiber rolls. And then, yeah, go ahead to the next one. A silt fence, that little lower area with the yellow, it's a little bit hard to see there, too, but that's a silt catchment fence that was also drawn into the plan, the initial plan. And then these are rows of hay bales going down this, the old road, which is a fairly steep road that's no longer in use. Every 50 feet, there's a row of hay bales. They're installed, like, dug into the ground, like, six inches so that it slows and stops water flow, basically. So after we had the Water Board inspection, we... Oh, yeah, sorry, there was one more. There's water bars on the entrance road with gravel to help keep the water from running out the road and causing more erosion. And then this is the latest project that we're continuing on right now, and this is based off of the Water Board's additional instructions. And it's basically a layer of hay, like, with jute fabric on top, and that's gonna be going all the way up that road as well. It is supposed to keep the raindrops from hitting the open dirt so that it causes less potential sediment flow off of the site. We've been learning a lot through this process and working with a lot of people that know what they're doing, so it's been, it's been a good project. This is the new amended remedial grading plan, including the full scope that was requested by the Water Board, and this is turned in to Public Works right now, just waiting the final stamp. So also, I've adjusted to the tier three in the general order with the Water Board. I contracted with Natural Investigations, the environmental consulting company, in early June to take care of the requirements. So there are three requirements to be able to switch to tier three, and these are biological assessment and report, archaeology, archaeological assessment and cultural report, and a site management plan. And so all of these have been done, and with them, a new notice of intent to move to tier three with a letter explaining the situation has all been submitted to the Water Board, and we're just awaiting a response from them. And that is pretty much, that's it for now. We're gonna keep moving forward as quickly as possible as all the pieces align.
Okay, so I had asked you to come back here today in the microphone.
No problem.
Okay, and I appreciate you doing that because it wasn't something you had to do, as Peter explained. It was voluntary that you came back.
Sure, no problem.
We had major concerns because we were submitted photos via email that came in to us showing that you were growing on the assessment area that was potentially gonna run downhill and cause more issues. Are you growing in that area now?
Yeah, I am growing on the property within the fenced area that was designated for the growth space.
On the tiers?
Yes.
And that's not an issue for watering in that area and causing more damage?
No, all my plants are in above-ground pots, not, the water doesn't go onto the ground.
Okay.
It's only in the pots.
Okay. And are those pots in the way of this work being done? And are they, they're gonna, will they be... Is this gonna stop the work from being completed because the pots are in the way?
No. No, it will not. They are in the way, but they will be moved. When the project begins, we intend to have a forklift move all those pots, whether, I'm hoping that harvest is done and the plants are not even in the pots, hopefully, but even if they are, we'll be moving the pots out of the way because that has to happen for the project to move forward, so that will be...
Okay, and where do you move the pots to? Because you've now designated your 22,000 square feet grow area.
Right.
Where are you gonna move them so that you're not now back into your 38,000 square feet?
Right, okay. So there's two plans. If there are no longer any plants in them, in the pots, I, we'll move the pots up to the uppermost terrace outside of the fenced area because there won't be any plants in them, and that'll allow space. Honestly, no matter what, they're gonna get moved twice. First, they'll have to move out of the way, and then they'll have to move back to make room for the other area to be worked on because the whole area is getting reworked. So if there are still plants, we'll just squish them in areas where, within the fence, in the allowable area. We won't be expanding to outside areas. It should be feasible.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be difficult, but it will be feasible.
Do any of the other commissioners have questions?
One question is, you mentioned at some point, Water Board, this is what I got from it, the Water Board will be happy if it's 70% stabilized, and that didn't sound like a very good result. Could you explain what you mean by that?
Sure, yeah. I don't know exactly where they came up with that percentage. I just know that that is how these SWIP programs work, and any contractor, I guess, on any site, like a construction site, uses this same program by the Water Board that basically stipulates that that's their stamp that things are, you know, stabilized and to the point where they...
See, to a layman, it sounds like, so 30% could wash down the hill tomorrow, but they're happy?
Yeah.
There's something I don't understand.
I agree. That sounds kind of weird. I don't know. I just know that I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure there's 0%, but I know that this program continues until the point at which 70%... The guy from the Water Board...
And that's the SWIP program.
That is the SWIP program, yep.
And you, but you continue with whatever...
Yeah.
You satisfy all their requirements for avoiding turbidity and this sort of thing.
Absolutely, yeah. And I mean, I think part of... Absolutely, yeah. And I mean, I think part of that isn't just the seventy percent rate of stabilization. I'm sure that it also includes that the water leaving the site is clean because that's the whole purpose of it. I have a lot of help from Cal State with this, so they're kind of my go-to when I have questions like that. So I could find out and, and get back to you if you, if you wanted to with more info.
I think, I think for now, you've provided a lot.
Okay, cool.
The visual impact I got from your presentation, whenever it was, a couple months ago, when was that?
Yeah, June.
Three months ago?
June.
A year ago? The thing that just stuck in my mind even after the presentation was these walls of dirt. And I was hoping that that would somehow be filled in or somehow minimized. Doesn't sound like they're going to be changed.
Sorry, I, I could elaborate more on that. They will be changed. The visuals that I showed just kind of showed what we had done in anticipation of the project to, to install erosion control. But when the grading plan actually happens, all of those cut banks will be set back to a one and a half to one slope as designed by the engineer. So that's the main purpose of the grading, the regrading, is to set the slopes back. And then they will be covered with erosion control seeding. And we're still designing the perfect way to do it, but we just got that final draft of the, the new and improved remediation plan. So we're still looking at it and adding our additional erosion control. But no matter what, yes, those slopes are getting set back.
Good.
Yeah.
How long does Dan Backer think it's going to take them, once they start work, to finish this regrading project and get rid of those vertical banks?
Okay, so with the initial draft, he had said approximately one week to ten days to finish the project. Now that we have had the additions to the project, I don't know yet. I would, I, I don't feel comfortable making my own guess because I'm not the one that knows about that. But I know before it was a five, a five to ten day project. I would imagine that's probably doubled. So it could be ten to twenty days. But that is in no way an official estimate, that's just my guess. I know that they will do it in a timely manner, that much I can say. I've seen the work that they, they do a really good job.
Yeah, and you hope it doesn't rain too much right then?
Yeah, definitely. And we have all the erosion control outside of the area that's going to be disturbed, you know, in place and/or in progress. Will be in place by the time it starts. And Total Site Management will be coming out to see what needs to be done to keep it, keep it stable during the process.
And it sounds as if, to, to make that slope, there's going to be a lot of dirt that needs to go somewhere.
Probably. I, I know that Cal State engineers that into the plan. And since I just received the, the official plan, well, it's not even official yet, but the next draft, hopefully the official. I haven't had a chance to look at exactly where that's going, but I do know an engineer designed it. So I know it, it must be going where it needs to go.
Do you know if it's staying on the property or is it being carted off?
I do know, to the best of my knowledge, no, no dirt is leaving the property.
Okay. I just would like to, and thank you for the presentation. I'd like to give the public a chance to comment if they would like to make any statements.
Okay, I'll sit down. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bill McManus from the Ban Committee. We heard an awful lot of references to things, other people that are going to do other things. And I never saw any paperwork that, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to be a hard case about it, but there were a lot of references made to a lot of people doing a lot of things. And there was never one official document that said, yeah, we're going to do it on letterhead or anything else. I was also at the meeting when this was approved. And the wall, that bottom tier that I saw being, I'm now retired, but having been a longtime general contractor, when I see tiers like that, I see huge red flags for OSHA to come in and say, you cannot let any employee out there without fall protection, retaining fences, that have to meet a certain outthrust capability. All sorts of regulations you have to go through to even allow anyone to walk out there. Otherwise you're shut down. And OSHA would not allow me to run a job like that. I would be done. All I can say is, you guys have fun with this one. You approved it, it's yours now. So we'll see how it turns out. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I think I'll have a seat here. Paul Grove, Planning Department. I've been involved in overseeing some of the progress on this project since the appeal was granted. And there are some things that I think I would like to discuss, put them beyond what Sarah just discussed with you. The upgrading to the tier three, that, she's correct there, the, she was required to do that because when that expansion of the grading occurred, the site was expanded beyond one acre. That required the tier three enrollment. So she did go ahead, get the site management plan, biological sites, agricultural resources, inventory, that was all done and submitted to the Water Quality Control Board. They are waiting for their action to actually process that application until they receive and approved, a site remediation grading plan approved by Public Works. And actually, I had verbal approval of that yesterday afternoon from, from Public Works. And that should be proceeding. There has, as she showed you on the slides, some best management practices employed as stock gap measures out there on the site to prevent any further erosion that may be occurring until the final grading remediation plan is submitted. And as I stated, that has been approved. The SWIP, again, that was also updated to reflect the changes in the expansion of scope by the Water Quality Control Board. It's my intent to get those revised approved documents, copies of each, and send them back to the Water Quality Control Board. And also make sure that Public Works has a copy of the SWIP plan, just so everybody's covered. They understand what the other parts and pieces are doing. Robin Peters over at Cal State is doing a good job in coordinating all of this. Let's see here. The inspection by the Water Quality Control Board was a little more complex than I think it was presented. They found several violations out there. They are not happy. It doesn't appear like they are very well pleased with this. There hasn't been a formal inspection report generated yet. Although I think the main issues, the main problems that they identified out there were conveyed to the civil engineer, Mr. Peters, and those I believe have been incorporated into the revised grading plan and the revised SWIP plan. So I don't anticipate any major problems with that, although we are awaiting a final report, inspection report. And there also will be a notice of violation, is my understanding, issued by the Water Quality Control Board on this site. What that is exactly, what that involves, I don't know. We're waiting to see that. However, as part of that, the appellant is going to be required to come up with a plan and a schedule for remediating everything that's identified within that inspection report and the violations. As I said, I think Mr. Peters has a pretty good feel and I believe where the existing grading remediation plan and the SWIP plan stands right now, pretty well reflects it. We're not expecting any big surprises, but we're going to have to do a double take on that. It's going to have to be covered. In the meantime, it does appear like, from what she showed on the slides there, I haven't actually visited the site myself. It appears that much of the best management practices for erosion and sediment control and such have been implemented out there. There is a great concern as far as the scheduling of this. With reference to the seasonal, the following rains that are coming, should those occur prior to maybe her optimistic viewpoint, she will be required to implement best management practices throughout the site by the Water Quality Control Board. Water Quality Control Board will be inspecting this, Public Works will be inspecting this. And as she said, her own civil engineer will be out there following up on inspections. So I think we've got some good eyes on the ground out there. In regards to relocating the plants and how the temporary setup works, the phasing, moving the plants here or there. And I think she just said she was going to build a fence around the whole thing at this point. This came up about a week or two ago and she was advised that during this remediation program, she's going to be required to maintain the cannabis within the designated cultivation area and maintain fencing, posting, all of the requirements under the urgency ordinance. So that's what we expect from her and most likely she will be inspected on that. And actually, there is a concern there on my part with the whole area being fenced that the, during the temporary relocation of the plants, this is something maybe we'll need to discuss, that they only be relocated within the approved designated cultivation areas. If you build a fence around the whole thing, I mean, you may increase the size of the, you know, 22,000 square foot approved area out to that 35,000 or 40,000 square feet. That doesn't mean you can go and just plant over there. I think that would be subject to review by the, the planning director. See what else I've got on this. As I said, the Water Quality Control Board will be issuing a notice of violation. I do not know what that will entail. You know, this is conceivably a violation of local state law, local state law right there. I don't know how that will be disposed of and how we will look at it. This will be up to the planning director. I want to say for my part, in terms of my participation in overseeing and trying to understand what's going on here and trying to keep a finger in it, that is my responsibility as a planner, as an employee of the county. It in no way is meant to imply an approval on any part on what she's doing out there. I want to make that perfectly clear so that we don't go back and revisit some of those issues that were part of the granting of this appeal. And I want to state that publicly. I think that's, I think that's about it for what I have to say. If you have questions?
Yes, Paul, is there any environmental testing going on? Is that it?
That will be part of the SWIP program. I believe, as she said, they are, they will be required to monitor discharges. The other thing, as far as that seventy percent, you know, it terminates at that point when the Water Quality Control Board says, you know, it's meeting that baseline. I'm not so certain of that. That is something I want to, that's something I need to investigate and make sure that we find out what that bottom line is for finally signing off on this. It isn't going to happen any other way as long as I'm involved.
And the SWIP is, is a separate segment?
It was wholly separate and it, it has to do, any, any general construction project of this nature that is an acre or more that occurs within the state is required to enroll in what is called the statewide general construction storm water permit program. And the SWIP is storm water pollution prevention plan. So this is a requirement. This is not a voluntary thing that we're just going out and doing out of the heart. And actually, my understanding is that the requirements under the SWIP program are much stricter than what we normally see under the Water Quality Control Board program.
And is it your impression that, that all due speed has been attempted in this project? As far as getting approvals and such?
Yes, that is my impression, honestly. I can't, if anything, there was a holdup in the county as far as maybe doing the plan review on the initial.
I'm just thinking people that might suspect that, oh, well, it's delayed until after harvest.
Well, I'll tell you, this is once, this is totally, we cannot tell the registrant here when to implement this. This is totally at her choice. And once we do have an approved remedial grading plan and an approved SWIP plan, it's totally her choice. My understanding is, you know, the grading is basically done. If, if Mr. Peters has made the corrections to the SWIP plan and they have been resubmitted, there's no reason that she wouldn't be able to start this maybe with, other than scheduling with her general contractor and such. It's totally at her, you know, this thing could begin conceivably within a week or two if, if the person was available to actually go out and do the work.
Okay.
So this is something, again, we, I feel there's, well, we can't tell her when to begin. But there's no reason, most likely, that she won't be able to begin within two or three weeks. The permits should be available. So we're kind, there is a little bit of playing, maybe a little more optimistically than we might be comfortable with as far as the rain coming.
Didn't you say that she needed the Water Quality Board signed off?
Well, yeah, well, she'll need to provide them with a schedule, but I'm not so certain that she needs that before beginning the workout on the jog. I don't, I don't believe that's true.
I can't imagine that happening.
She will have to implement whatever changes and adjustments that they want to see. And in, and to some extent, I actually sent out an email the other day to all parties concerned that it, actually pushing the Water Quality Control Board to get us that final inspection report and get us that notice of violation so we can identify everything and have one final scope of work that includes everything. Now, I'm not anticipating any major problems, but there could be some issues there. But I think most of it's covered and I don't see any reason myself, from where I'm at, from, from what I know, that this, this work could not begin once a permit is issued.
I want to say I really appreciate the Planning Department's efforts and your efforts to keep on top of this and keep us informed.
Welcome. Any other questions?
I don't think I have any questions. I just would think that, and I could see that she's ready to roll, but I would want to get it done before there's more issues that they get violations and fines for. So I can see an urgency in getting it done based on what the Water Quality Control Board is going to cite her with, so.
Well, that's, you know, again, this is her choice.
Yes.
And if, and if the rains come early and we have an unfortunate set of circumstances to do out there for whatever reason, and if further violations occur and our, our, our notice to the planning department, there very well could be another denial in this project. You know, that's staying a flatline. That's the way it rolls.
All right. Well, Sarah, thank you for coming back and giving us an update. I do appreciate it. And now we're going to go into our procedural hearing guidelines. You guys are welcome to stay and join us if you'd like. And do you want to comment, Colleen?
I have a question before the planning.
Oh, excuse me?
One more question.
Sure, absolutely. Because this is kind of an informal update. Please, go ahead.
Just with the concern of the, of coming rains. We had a thunderstorm down in our neck of the woods Thursday night.
Right.
Some people had an inch and a half of rain already. So I'm concerned about that. And I, I think Mr. Grove mentioned that there was a possibility of implementing BMPs, best management stuff throughout the site if rains came earlier. And I was wondering how that would happen with the plants and the pots and the walls of dirt. I mean, how could that be done?
Well, I think she's showed us quite a few pictures of what she's already set up with the layers of hay and the netting.
Outside, outside the grow area.
Right. Inside the grow area? I don't know. That's why I said I would think there would be some urgency in getting this done before the rains come because the Water Quality Control Board is inspecting her, it sounds like.
Okay.
Well, that is the purpose of the exterior erosion control measures is, you know, you have interim measures during construction. So if there's a rain event while construction is occurring, it doesn't, the sediment is trapped and doesn't run offsite. So there are interim measures. So there are interim measures that are in place with any kind of, of project, grading project. And that's what I understand to be in place now already and would be part of the monitoring under the SWIP program during construction, that kind of monitoring to ensure that that's maintained and is, you know, functioning properly.
But, but prior to construction, if we get rains prior to construction and we've got the existing site, those will still help contain?
Yes, that's the whole point of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Hey, you're welcome.
All right. So we'll move on to, do you guys need a break or do you want to just go straight into the next item? Keep rolling. All right, let's do it. Thank you. All right. So we're going to go into our adoption of revised rules of Planning Commission hearing procedures. There was a discussion that was had previously on August 10th by the Planning Commission, minus Tim Ladish and myself. That must have been a very short meeting.
I watched the tape.
They didn't have us, though, to keep it going. So I don't know, Peter, if you want to just, what did you, excuse me, it's not public comment right now, Mrs. Mills. Would you like to bring this up to speed or do you think we're already there?
Well, just maybe just real briefly, as you said, about a month ago, we heard it. We were directed to come back with changes or a number of very specific changes, as well as some sort of open-ended changes that we're going to make, particularly as it relates to the scheduling and the timing of when documents would be released to the public, as well as when they need to be submitted to you, so you had time to read them. So Julie, in her inimical style, decided to rewrite the whole thing. And so it's not just a straight, you know, you can see the other line across out. She sort of rearranged things, organized it differently, but the, the substance is, is there. And hopefully that was able to come out as you reviewed this. The, so all of the specific changes that you had requested are there. I double-checked to make sure that that was there. The changes that we made as far as, you know, comment letters is in section two. And what, what we have committed to, and it's in the staff report, although it's not in the procedures because it's really not your procedures, it's our internal procedures, is we are shifting from a one-week release of the packet to an almost two-week release of the packet. We're in transition right now. We may or may not get out some of the packet tomorrow for you for the next meeting. But because of Julie being on vacation and the amount of work necessary to get the reports on the ordinance and the EIR, that will not be ready. And Tim, I'm sorry, we'll have to post it on your net and hopefully you'll have access in Santa Fe.
Yeah, I've asked Annette to mail me.
Mail to you, okay. And just, so, so, but henceforth, we will be getting, you know, with the exception that maybe the circumstance that someone's out sick, that we just can't get it. But we will try to do our best to get it out to you and posted on the Friday, two weeks prior to the hearing. So it'll be 13 days prior to the hearing. That will give plenty of time for the public and you and County Council to review the documents and to provide written documents, you know, written responses or briefs or whatever other comments. And I think we decided that was going to be submitted to us no later than 5:00 on Monday before the hearing. So that gives us two full days to review the documents. Hopefully that will be enough and provide certainly enough time for the public, the appellant's applicants to review our staff reports and make any responses or rebuttals to what we've presented. Other than that, I think that we tried to capture everything that you had recommended to us. I did meet with Commissioner Ladish earlier this week and went over some comments that he had. And we also received a letter from Colleen of My Valley Springs suggesting that a survey rebuttal for members of the public be put back into, into the hearing procedures under 1A. I'll let you debate and discuss that. I'm not sure of the need for one more opportunity for the public to come back up and speak again, but that's something that.
Process issue for. I think it would cause a due process issue for the appellant or, because then it just seems like they should have the last chance to be able to speak. And then if the public goes back in and then debates them again and then they want to go back and debate, it's like an ongoing, and it goes on and on and on.
We could talk about that.
Well, I think that's something that we guys will want to talk about. The other recommended, and you all received a memo from Commissioner Ladish that had some other changes. You know, for the most part, I think they're just more styled than they are substance. There's, you know, some substance to it, but I'm, I'm fine with those changes.
Is this when I swish my hair?
It's when you go on vacation again. Style in a good way.
Yeah. So, you know, other than the, the issue of the, you know, final comments by the public, everything else, you know, is, I'm, I'm fine with. I think the rest is something that's, an issue that the commission should discuss and resolve.
I would suggest we go through Mr. Ladish's suggestions, which incorporate, I think, the substance of what Ms. Platt has submitted as well.
So do I. So do I.
Yeah, and I only. I only presented the paragraphs to which I was suggesting a change in these comments, except for one where there's an extraneous or a duplicative third sentence. I didn't set forth that paragraph. So, okay, so why, why don't we just do it so that, is there anything before 1A3 in the, in the draft presented by staff that's a problem?
I think your change is fine.
Okay. And then my, my change to 1A3 is just a clarification, as Peter said. 1A4, my thought is since in 1A7, we specify rebuttal by applicant-appellant, including the applicant's agent, engineer, or representative. We, we ought to put that in 1A4 also, so nobody's going to think that they, that agent, engineer, or representative has to wait until the rebuttal.
Did you get a copy of this out in the public?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. So we're not talking and you're lost. Okay.
So any problem with 1A4, the way I have it?
Yeah, let me read it again. The idea there being just that it then matches 1A7.
It matches and it, it makes it clear that there's only 15 minutes total for all these people to make a presentation. Okay, so 1A9 is, is the one that's, that is probably going to be the most discussion about. I was struck in the last, before the last hearing by John Buckley of CERC, indicated that he really thought that the members of the public should get a, a chance at rebuttal. And I think he makes a very good case, as I do think that Colleen Platt has also made a very good case for this approach in that if you recognize how limited this is, what we're saying is rebuttal by any member of the public who has spoken under section 1A5 and whose comments have been the subject of rebuttal by either the staff or by the applicant. So it's limited by those terms and also very much limited by just the use of the word rebuttal because the draft that the staff has proposed in 1A, not 1, 1D, it says rebuttal is restricted to addressing issues raised earlier in the hearing and should not be a mere restating of the party's prior testimony or argument. So what this provision would do is that if a member of the public gets up, and we're talking about people who have very distinct interest, many of these members of the public, very distinct interest in the subject matters. If they're a neighbor of somebody who's causing erosion and a cannabis grow and they're downstream or if they're a neighbor of somebody who's going for a zoning ordinance and they get up and they make their quick pitch and then the party that they are basically opposing gets up and either lies or makes some misstatement or makes some misleading comments from their point of view, this is their chance to come back and just deal with those comments, the rebuttal comments made by the, the party. And they are limited very much to rebutting those comments. And so I, I went so far as to write out something that the chair might be able to, I mean, this is a suggestion. This isn't a part of the procedures. But that the, the part, member of the public who says they want to rebut would be told, or this is a suggestion, they'd be told that their, your rebuttal is strictly limited to situations when, after you made your statements today, either the county or the applicant-appellant has rebutted one or more of your statements with comments that you consider to be false, misleading, or otherwise necessary of clarification. You must limit the scope of your rebuttal to those particular comments. And I think the chair could enforce that religiously to make sure that this isn't abused. The last thing I want is having a hearing go on and on and on and on with a long chain of things. And since this is just rebutting a rebuttal, it's got to be narrow. Anyhow, you want to discuss that one?
No.
No rebuttal?
Well, you just said you didn't want it to go on and on and on, so I have nothing to say.
Okay, so.
Do any of the other commissioners want to discuss that one?
Yes.
I got off on that one.
By the time the public comment period begins, the public has the staff report, the applicant or appellant's written submissions, the presentation of the staff report recommendation, and the applicant slash appellant's presentation. Then is the opportunity for public comment. It's all been laid out. Everybody's position has been laid out. That is the time during public comment for the public to make its case and rebut at that time, whatever they disagree with that's been presented by either staff or the applicant-appellant.
I fully agree with you so far.
The, what they're really asking for is two rebuttals, which nobody else gets.
That's right.
Now, the applicant slash appellant has the burden before this commission. They should get the last opportunity to speak. They have the most to win or lose. That's just how you do it in civil court. If you have the burden, you get to go last and first. If, in a particular case, it appears that some survey rebuttal might be appropriate, the chair has a discretion under this proposal to allow that. So I don't see a need for survey rebuttal. I don't think it's fair to the applicant or the appellant. So far as I know, according to a survey that we were given earlier, I think of some seven counties, only one other county, and that's Tualamee County, has this.
What I'm wondering then is if, as you say, the chair has discretion, I think the chair ought to at least indicate that somebody can apply for the application of that discretion. If, if, if we just proceed with the hearing and act as if no such rebuttal can ever be possible, I don't think many members of the public would get up and say, well, wait a minute, what about?
Oh, they do it all the time. Are you kidding? I have to constantly.
Okay. So what all I'm saying is, I mean, I.
And I will recognize them.
You make a.
And you will recognize them.
You make a good point.
Colleen just wanted to make another public comment at the end here and I acknowledged her and let her come up and ask her questions. I don't think anybody's ever been stopped. I believe in that transparency and questioning, but I just don't want a set of precedents for it to go on and on and on and on.
I'm sure you do. But what about just saying, giving the opportunity for somebody to say, I would like to make a rebuttal in making that case for that?
Well, I don't think that's any more appropriate than anything else somebody might want to bring up to add to the discretion that's already in the rules. People read the rules and I'm, I'm very sure that some of the people that comment here frequently have read the rules and, and understand them very well. And to single out, to require the chair to single out a particular group and say, by the way, our rules don't provide for survey rebuttal, but you can do it anyway, maybe. I don't think is appropriate.
Now, and the other thing that you need to keep in mind is, when will these become effective?
Immediately?
No.
Before the 28th.
Okay, so.
If they're adopted today, they will be effective the next year.
Please keep that in mind for the 28th and 29th.
I think, I think we have a, I think there's, I mean, I think.
Wow.
Kelly is recognizing that sometimes people who have been maligned in the, in the statements and this sort of thing have good reason to give a rebuttal. And I'm just concerned that not somebody who's experienced with the hearings, I'm sorry to keep gesturing in Colleen's direction. You know, but the neighbor who's just finally had the temerity to get up and say, these people have been threatening me in the street and this sort of thing. And they get up and say, oh, she was committed to a mental institution two years before, so don't pay any attention to her. And she's going to be, you know, just a, a basic citizen might feel completely battered.
That's why they get the, the staff report. They can put their letters in writing and public, they can submit it. They can come up here and talk. They're going to get to hear both presentations by staff as well as the individual before us before they ever go to public comment. And, and his point.
It's the rebuttal, though, that we're talking about. And yes, they understand what staff has.
Okay, so where does due process come in for the person that's paying for the appeal? They're paying the $500. If a public individual wants to file the appeal, then they get the right to be the last voice. But how do you take that due process away from the person that's paying the fee to come up here and speak and paying for this meeting to be held? And you're going to let them not have the last word? And who's to say that public person isn't just making stuff up like, hey, Tim Ladish just got out of a mental institution and you thought he was on vacation, Colleen? If he wasn't, then I have to sit next to him. So now I just made a statement that I have no factual documentation on because that's not what your wife said.
But I, and, and I would be so cowed by that statement that I wouldn't say a word. How can this?
So, but you get my point. The public isn't bringing me facts. And a appellant is going to bring facts to prove their case. The burden's on them. And I think that we're pushing the limits here.
What I suggest we do is we not make a final decision on that until we have public comment and we just move on to the next.
Sweet, perfect idea. You're going to be a great chairman someday.
Learned at your knee. Okay, so 2A, we're talking about written comments. And my, my concern was that we really spell out exactly what our requirements are, including what constitutes filing and just what form we need to get these statements in. I understood from reading the draft that we're prepared to receive these forms electronically or in hard copy and hard copy can either be mailed or in person. Does anybody have a problem with that? And that, that's just what I understood.
Okay.
The practice to be.
I think that.
You skipped something.
Staff was pretty clear about what they needed, the, the copies that they wanted. And I guess I missed.
Whoops, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did skip something.
Okay.
I skipped, I skipped section 1B and that's the, the chair's discretion. That I wanted to make it clear that the chair would have discretion to reopen the public hearing, even once the public hearing is closed. We do that all the time.
And we do it all the time, which is good.
And, but that, that discretion ends at any time that, at the time. At the time of the vote, that discretion ends. So say, right now, you couldn't say, "Well, I'd like to reopen the..."
I've done that.
...earlier.
But we've done that. We've been in deliberation, and then we start having conversation, and then comments break back.
No, no, that's fine. During deliberation is fine.
Okay, 'cause we have...
He's just saying, once you voted, it's over.
I don't... It can't be a substitute for reconsideration. It's once we voted, the chair couldn't reopen the...
We can't now.
You can't now.
I think he's just trying to clarify. He's making it explicit.
We're all in agreement.
Whether or not you all think that's necessary to spell it out.
Well, that's under the Brown Act. I mean, you...
Well, I just... I think it's... I think it's good to spell things out, that's all. If you don't think that that's necessary...
I like spelling things out so you understand what we're doing.
Okay, that's right. I need it. So, anybody have a problem with 1B?
No, that's fine. All of them.
Yeah, no, I do.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I don't have a problem with it any time before the vote. I do have a problem with for public hearing. You can reopen an event that doesn't call for participation by the public. Leave it open-ended.
Okay.
Reopen any event.
Okay, how do we make it clear that...
Leave in the present...
If we just do the... Take out the for public hearing, you don't have a problem?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, let's do that. I don't think anybody's gonna claim that the chair doesn't have the discretion to reopen it even though it's closed public hearing. Okay, now, I'm sorry, back to 2A. I'm on page three of my comments. So does anybody have a problem with documents can be filed electronically or in hard copy by mail or in hard copy by person? Is that our current practice? That's my understanding.
Well, does that mean that you get to put it in the mail by 5:00?
No, 'cause that's why I have... The last sentence is, "For purposes of this hearing procedure, document filed," means actually received by the clerk of the planning commission, either (1) in hard copy or (2) electronically in a form that can be opened by the clerk. So I think we've covered it. Okay, so no problem with 2A?
Okay, wait a minute. I want to get the staff's opinion on that because that is going to affect Annette or Peter's workload. And so when we're talking about adjusting their administrative duties, I want their input.
Sure, and this is my understanding of the meaning of what we already...
Yeah, and this is what we do already, so I think it's fine to spell it out. And I especially like the addition of the other sentence because this is something that's come up, you know, recently, that we have to have it in our hand.
I just wanted to make sure that you guys are in line with that and okay.
That's great.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
Okay, 2C. I don't need to read these aloud, I don't think. I just... The way it was written in the draft, it sounded like the party submitting the document had a risk, even once it was received by the clerk, that it wasn't gonna get elsewhere within the planning department or to us. And I don't think that's the risk we need to be talking about. It's that the party submitting the document by mail or electronically assumes the risk that the clerk of the planning commission will not receive it by any deadline set forth in these procedures or will not be able to open the electronic file. So that's... Somebody can't say, "Well, I mailed it five days before. If the clerk has not received it, it ends in "file."
And you're right. It's just common.
Yeah, right, right. So, move on to 2D.
So I'm assuming Scott has no problem.
I'm okay with this.
Yeah.
It clarifies what we intended.
I'm assuming you're gonna speak up, Peter, if you reconsidered before discussing the area. Okay. And 2D, actually, this is Peter's suggestion that we have this specific by 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, two weeks before the hearing day. This is so that... The main point of this requirement is that the party submitting the documents needs to bring copies to the hearing so there isn't any problem with the electronic transmission and et cetera. And one question I have, Annette, is the... Do you have a problem when you receive documents by mail, you scan them in order to send them to us? You know, I mean, when you actually get hard copies...
I usually scan them and give them to the planner.
Okay, but I mean, things that you pass on to us, you would scan them and pass them on electronically?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That's how it happens.
Well, that's...
You scan it in, and then you push another button.
That's what I was... I just didn't... I wanted to make sure you weren't getting in a bind.
Okay, so I want to stop you there for one second. Even if Peter helped you, it doesn't matter to me. I'm still argumentative.
Yeah.
So this on number D on the county's copy says one week. You've changed it to two weeks?
Well...
That's pretty intense.
Well, that's because Friday, as Peter mentioned in the staff report, Friday of the second week before the hearing is when the agenda and the documents are gonna be submitted to us.
So this D was wrong and should have been two weeks?
Well, at the time, we were still looking at a one-week release of the... The first draft of this, we were still considering a one-week release of the packet.
Okay.
Now, if they want to have it included in the packet, it has to be on Thursday before we prepare it on that Friday. So, yeah, the timing, you know, is...
Thank you.
Okay. All right, 2E, just getting rid of pursuant to Section 3 continuances. I didn't see where this section itself had anything to do with continuances. So I just eliminated that line.
Okay, and when I had an issue...
Do you have an issue?
Not with you.
Oh, okay.
I have G. Eliminate... Oh, someone else did it too. Never mind. Someone else already got it. You got it. Thank you.
Yeah, once you get to 2G...
Have to do that.
Once you get to 2G, there's just... The third sentence is
I agree.
almost completely repetition of the second. Eliminate the third and... Great. Which will then require us to renumber the rest of the 2s.
And then you go...
There is one thing that I just thought about today on this one here that, you know, Mr. Landby, for example, had brought his own computer. Well, that... We need to make sure we get a copy of that. So we might want to add a line here that says something in the effect that any, you know, the presenter shall provide a copy of any electronic presentation made at the hearing to staff for the record, unless it's already in there.
I did see that in here.
Well, it's in 2I, has the screen views of photos, videos, and stuff. But I think it could be made clear.
But one of the things in I that we have allowed is when we're questioning people and we're looking for evidence, they've got it on their phone. They didn't know we were gonna ask for it. And so they do pass it down, and we take a look at it. I think that maybe we could change this because sometimes that could make the difference between them getting an acceptance or a denial by having something on their phone that we all get to visually see here. So I think if we change this language to say, "As long as that documentary form is submitted to the planning department before they leave here, it'll be kept on file." I mean, but should we not rule if they have the evidence on a doc, on a device that we can see while they're standing in front of us?
It doesn't get to be a member... A part of the record is my concern.
It is required. Required could be...
Required to be a part of it. I mean, 'cause I don't want to...
Not immediately or somehow.
I mean, we ask a whole bunch of questions, and they're able to produce it on their phone. I would hate to penalize someone just if they were willing to provide that document to the planning department before leaving here. That should be ruled on.
And, okay, should that... That would be a part of the 2I, right?
Right, that's what I would...
Maybe just add on to the...
That's where I had it.
To the end of that sentence.
Yes.
Shall not be considered by the commission as evidence unless...
A copy is...
A copy is provided to...
The planning department.
The clerk or...
How do we... I mean, with the phone?
Well, you're sitting right there with the phone. We have Wi-Fi, and you hit, "Oh, I'm gonna send this to Annette right now."
She can email it. They can email it.
Immediately. They could email it to the clerk. They could, if for whatever reason that didn't work. They could, just before they leave campus, make... Go back with the planner. And I mean, I think there's...
They can email it right off their phones.
Okay, I'd say, well, if it could be emailed, then I think unless a copy is immediately provided electronically or otherwise...
Well, I'm not gonna penalize someone when they have the evidence in front of them on a phone, and they can email it and hit it just like that.
Yeah, if they can. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, good.
Good.
Next.
Sarah, do you have that language?
So unless a copy is... Just add at the end of that sentence, unless a copy is provided to the clerk?
Yes.
Right, it doesn't matter how it's provided, but somehow.
Somehow that we can get a recording of it that...
But during that...
It has to be during the process so that we make sure we get a copy before they walk out here.
Yeah. So I mean, like before the vote or what, immediately? What do we say?
It doesn't have to be before the vote necessarily, but I think we could say, "Shall not be considered..."
Before the vote.
Well, during the hearing.
I mean, if it's before the vote, we would need to call a recess and somehow get a copy.
You guys are seeing it before the vote, obviously. Maybe you're seeing it on somebody's phone that's getting passed or whatever.
But then we're gonna be making a decision on something, and if they don't...
We're gonna be tracking it.
If they don't submit it, we're making a decision.
I think it's happened maybe once or twice through all of the appeals that we've had that I can recall. You know, if it's a simple matter of just calling a brief recess, taking the phone over, you know, sending an email to the planning department, staff going over, retrieving that, and printing it out and bringing it back as part of the record. You know, we could certainly do that.
So unless a cop... Oh, sorry. Unless a copy is provided to the clerk before the conclusion of the hearing?
That'd be great.
I'm happy.
Okay.
Okay. I just didn't want them to not...
No, no, that's fine. I think that's great. Okay. So, under continuances, there are a couple of times where the draft specifies certain parts of Section 2 without just including Section 2. So mainly, what I'm trying to do is, in 3B, is a request of continuance shall be filed, okay, instead of should be, with the clerk of the planning commission pursuant to Section 2 above, which has to do with filing. Unless the commission determines the circumstances giving rise to the request could not reasonably have been anticipated prior to the provided deadline, and I mean the deadline provided in Section 2. That's, you know, it's... This is pretty much housekeeping that I just wanted to make sure that all of Section 2 is applicable.
Okay, but it does more than that because the draft from planning begins, "A request for a continuance should be filed." That covers all requests for continuances, no matter who makes them.
Yeah, the reason I limited it to applicants and appellants was the under... Let's see. To under 3A, either the commission or the applicant can raise the possibility of continuance. And I didn't want anybody to say, "Well, the..." The commission... Wait a minute, am I wrong in saying commission? Or is that... Was it... Should they be staff? Let's see, let's look at 3A.
It says commission retains discretion.
Oh, yeah, it's commission, okay. So the planning commission retains discretion to... For continuance to future meetings on its own motion or on the motion of the applicant-appellant. And I didn't want anybody to say, "Well, the planning commission didn't file a request for continuance." I saw two parties that could request continuance, and I... So I wanted to make sure that it wasn't... The requirement wasn't applicable to the planning commission.
Okay, I think this brings up a... Just maybe another issue here, which is the way the original draft is written and the way Commissioner Lattish's redraft is written, only the planning commission or the applicant-appellant can request a continuance. There is no room for anybody else to do that.
No, there hasn't been, so...
Peter and legal counsel have made today, for an example, asked for a continuance.
Yeah, but are you suggesting that it should be broader than that?
Well, I'm just raising that question. I tend to agree with the way this is done here, that it should be limited to either the the commission or the staff or the applicant or the appellant.
Well, see, now, staff's just making a recommendation to us to make the... To do a continuance. They're not necessarily the ones that are voting to do the continuance. So that's kinda...
The reason, you know, as I said, the reason I said an applicant-appellant's request is just because I didn't want anybody to say, "Well, the commission didn't make a request." But you raised a question, and I suppose this is something else for public comment as far as whether the public should be able to request a continuance, but...
Was that...
I have a suggestion. This is on A, 3A. That we could add. Actually, I'd like to change... It says, "To future meetings on its own motion or on," I would say, "a request of an applicant or appellant." They don't really file motions here. There's more...
I like that.
And then add "or staff" at the end of that.
And then my revision would stay the same. I mean, my 3B...
Right, because that would not pertain to the commission nor staff.
We're not gonna tell the staff that you didn't put in an application in time.
I mean, you could, but...
Okay. All right. Kelly, does that... I know it doesn't answer the question.
I like it.
Well, yeah, I think B is fine. I think when you get to 3C, I think you could make it a little simpler, which would just...
You could certainly make it simpler. You can just say, "Any request for continuance shall be... Shall have any supporting documents attached."
Well, I think just all you have to do is say, strike the provisions of Section 2 apply and just say, "Applicant-appellant requests for continuances shall describe the basis for the request and et cetera." And you could actually combine that with B.
I think that's a great idea. And I know this 3C was repetitive, and I was trying not to eliminate everything that had been provided. Okay, so Sarah, are you our secretary at this point?
I'm trying.
Okay. So if we put it under B, then you could just say, "Any such request shall describe the basis for the request, comma, and any supporting document shall be attached."
Yes.
So just add that one sentence on to B?
Yeah.
Okay.
But any... And put the word "any" before "such."
Right.
Yeah, I think that's an improvement. Then you're gonna have to renumber the rest of the 3s.
That's easy enough to do.
You do have to do that.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to do that anyhow because I suggest that we can do without the 3D that was suggested. Okay. The general public comment period. 4A, I wanted to make it clear that the general comment period is that that precedes the public hearing of any agenda item in case there was any confusion there. And that's the one which I...
Well, let's go back on this just because...
Which one?
General public comment periods.
Yeah, okay.
There was an incident this last week that should be addressed in this. And there was some code that was quoted. I looked up that code, and it did say... Do you remember the code that was brought up at the board of directors, board of supervisors, where people were talking in the general public? And it was specifically stated that they cannot get up there just to be talking and slandering people. They have to be speaking to a... that they cannot get up there just to be talking and slandering people, they have to be speaking to an item that can be agendized.
It can be.
If it's not an item that can be agendized, it should not be being discussed at that podium. And I don't remember the code, do you? Five, four, or something. But I do believe we should be just putting that on the record right here and right now.
I do, I did put in the word land use so that it shall be limited to land use subjects not appearing on the agenda. You want to be more specific?
I do, because there's code that specifically references to the Brown Act. We can come back to that and she can give it to us later, but I do would like to see, I do would. I would like to see that added, so we'll get to that when she pulls it up, so we can move on.
Okay, so we'll go back.
Was that a government code, the government code section?
It was a Brown Act, I believe it came right out of the Brown Act, um, and it's, because I did look it up. I know. But if we put it in here now, we don't have an issue with it later. And then if we have a person that is completely out of line speaking to things that shouldn't be talked about, we can be clear that it's in our procedures.
So how?
It's just a code we're gonna reference, you got it? Go ahead.
Five, four, nine, five, four, point, three.
Five, four, nine, five, four, point, three. All right, and.
And is that government code?
That is, yes, that's the Brown Act code in government.
So how, how would you get, work that into this? I mean, can't we put it under the shall be limited thing?
Well, what it, what it would be is the item, under general public comment items that need to be spoke about that are not on, you got the verbiage?
Says it has to be within the jurisdiction of the legislative body that's hearing the public test.
Yeah, now that's, that's why I put in the words land use, not knowing about the code.
Right, it's, it is very broad, it's anything within the subject matter jurisdiction, which obviously in this case would be land use.
So, but do we want to say Calaveras County land use subjects?
Why not just say subjects within the subject jurisdiction of the commission?
Within, within the commission.
Planning departments, subject, planning commissions.
Well, I mean, I, I think.
I know, I, I like that too, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission, that works for me.
So let's say land use subjects within, right?
Or just say.
Well, but I don't think we need to limit it to land use if we're saying.
It's anything under the purview of the commission.
Okay, okay.
Well, I can't think of anything, any good examples at the moment.
That's fine, that's fine.
So shall be limited to, um, matters within the subject matter jurisdiction.
I don't know, I'd say subjects within.
Or you, you have subjects within.
Because matters start sounding like cases or something.
You're correct, then subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission.
And now, how do we get the, not appearing on the agenda, sounds like the subject matter jurisdiction not appearing on the agenda, shall be limited to, how about?
Subjects not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission?
Yes, yeah, that's what I'd do, not appearing on the agenda because. Okay, so, so what do you have, or want to finish writing that down?
Um, so I have, so looking at your Commissioner Ladish, your revised, uh, draft here, during the general public comment period which precedes public hearing of any agenda item, comments to the planning commission, uh, on subjects, or shall be limited to subjects not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission.
Yeah.
And which are?
We've got a lot of ands there now. And which, and shall be limited to five minutes per person.
You, you, I mean, if, if the sentence is getting too run on.
I agree with you.
The word not preceding that may make it ambiguous, so when you finish it, you might want to reverse those two.
Yeah, you should either say subjects within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission but not appearing on the agenda, or, subjects not appearing on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. You could do it either way, it doesn't matter.
Right, okay.
Then, then why don't you end the sentence and just say, such comments shall be limited.
I agree.
And, 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 and.
Okay.
Is there, is there any time when you'd want it limited to less than five minutes?
Yes.
Such as?
Such as, I will be doing it at the end of this month, I've already announced that it will be restricted to three minutes.
That's what I thought, okay.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the discretion.
Well, it's, it's, they say it right there, there's five minutes per person.
And I'm gonna.
Less at the discretion of the chair.
I, I think maybe it'd be good because I think earlier when we talked about the discretion, it's discretion during the hearing of agenda items.
Do we want to say, shall be limited to not more than five minutes per person?
Subject to the discretion of the chair.
Not more than five minutes at the discretion of the chair, can be less.
I'm lost.
This commission may decide, we don't want to hear five minutes.
Okay, under public comments, it already says five minutes per speaker under one A five.
Yeah, but that's, that's during an agenda item.
That's true.
That's, that's, that's where we have to really watch out. And, and I think our, our discretion, the chair's discretion is under one B. So that's, that's, that's talking again about agenda items, so I think we better put something in about the chair's discretion.
You are right.
Who says we can't?
Why, why, why? Why ValleySpring.com can maybe one minute?
You know, I have to tell you, I'm gonna say this because.
It was a joke.
I know, I know, but during the general plan, sometimes they needed more than five because there were some good conversations.
Yep, okay.
So just want to make sure I have this.
Yeah.
Four A, during the general public comment period which precedes the public hearing of any agenda item, comments to the planning commission shall be limited to subjects not appearing on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission, period. Such comments shall be limited to not more than five minutes per person at the discretion of the chair.
I don't know, not more than, I don't think it's, I've got the discretion in there, I think we're fine.
Yeah, just leave the word discretion and then we're good, we can go up or down.
Okay.
Now, I don't, I don't like your D.
You don't like my D?
I do not like your D.
Okay, um, okay, yeah, now, fine, make any suggestions you want, because I, I.
I do, it, it is, the, the staff and the commission does not have to respond to public comment, but there are times when we do not have a packed room and we have had very good public comment discussions and answered questions for the public commenters, and I don't want to say we can't answer their questions because sometimes I think it's necessary to answer a question from a public commenter. Peter's answered them, we've answered them, and it gives some comfort to the public that comes here to speak when they go away with their answers versus going away and feeling like they talked to a wall, I can't stand that.
That's dandy.
So I don't want to take that out.
Yeah, I just, I, I was interpreting the second clause of this, of the draft as providing this, I, I don't have a problem with.
I like people going away happy with answers.
Okay, so, do, we go back to what the language was in the draft? Neither the planning commission nor staff is obligated to respond to questions asked by the public during the general comment period?
I'm gonna have to ask her to leave if she continues to interrupt, sorry, I apologize that she's doing that to you.
I'm not hearing, but, but I, I'm looking for a suggestion from you.
I'll give you one.
Yeah.
Take the original.
Yep.
And strike the phrase, and neither may respond to issues that are not on the agenda. And leave it as the wise as is.
That just, that we're not obligated to.
Correct.
Period.
That works.
That, granted, grand. You like that, Peter?
Yeah.
You have to live with this too.
After we're gone, he'll live with it.
He smiles.
Maybe not.
And we could all be gone quickly.
Reconsideration, um, I noticed everywhere else I try to refer to this as the hearing procedures document and I put an S on the word procedure there in the second line, but, um, again, all, on, if we're gonna hear something on reconsideration, this whole document's gonna be applicable, so I didn't want to just have section one. Now, what about this second sentence that I've added? The parties and other interested persons each can choose whether to file additional documents on merit. I think on reconsideration, we're reconsidering usually because new facts have come up or new, uh, cases have been decided or whatever.
You know, there's some specific policy on these reconsiderations that is, um, isn't there, there any language being written up about this and we've stricken some things?
The board adopted the amendment, like, two weeks ago, so it'll become effective sometime in, um, later this month. So, um, the, the new procedure basically leaves the decision to reconsider it up to you. Once you've reconsidered, once you've decided to reconsider, then they have the opportunity to submit any new information. I would be hesitant, and, and the reason that we've had these reconsiderations primarily so that appellants that didn't get information into the record have used this process, tried to get new information into the record, so when they sue the county, they have more information in there, because right now they're limited to what was presented the first time around. So, I'm, and I can't remember if we discussed this or not the other day, if we did, I'm having second thoughts.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
And I think that.
No, no, you're, you're bound by a stopple, you assuredly.
No, I think that we need to strike that out, I don't, I don't want your comments.
What are we striking out?
You're saying you like it as, as drafted?
I like it as drafted, I don't want to add any of this new verbiage and cause more problems, what do you think?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, okay, you're only gonna refer to section one and not the provisions of this hearing procedures document?
Well, you're just looking at what you rewrote, you're not looking at the actual document that we're reading off of, right? What are you looking at?
Well, I, I, but I, I crossed out section one of the, of the second draft and I've added the provisions of this hearing procedures document because it's more than section one, it's, I don't know, filing requirements and everything else are in this.
I think that first change is probably fine, it just.
The first change is okay.
Yeah, it's the, the added sentence, I think.
Okay, then what about, okay, so we're not gonna, we should have something in there one way or the other if new, it seems to me if we're being, if it's reconsideration on the basis of newly discovered facts, I'd kind of like to see in advance some argument as to why the facts are pertinent.
But, but I think that the argument that you're going with is the exact reason why the supervisors had to go in and change how we were gonna handle it into the future, because if we're gonna do a reconsideration, we just had a hearing on this, were you there?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure so, so sure we wanted to see more, Peter, you're gonna have to.
I'm not saying.
Let me read what Julie wrote on here before we. So they're not allowing new, um, testimony to come in on this, from what I'm reading.
Wait a minute.
How do you get reconsideration without?
So, so, so the.
That's what they were trying to do.
The new procedure for reconsideration is a decision that you may choose to make.
Yeah.
Not something that an appellate has the right to apply for.
Right.
Which is the way the old ordinance was written.
Yeah.
This way, if you, you know, maybe a member of the public or an appellate or an applicant comes to you and says, you know, gosh, I just really think you made the wrong decision and here's my reason why, and you think, oh gee, you know, I didn't really think about it that way, I'd like to bring this back up for reconsideration, you would then bring that up, you know, to the, to the commission.
If you were in the majority or absent.
If, yeah, if you're in the majority.
Or absent.
Or you're absent, and then have the ability to decide whether or not to rehear this. And if you decide, you know, there's merit here and we want to rehear it, then that's the opportunity for the appellate to bring in new information.
Well, yeah, but that's what we're dealing with right now, is, uh,
Isn't the requirement for the reconsideration that they have new facts that they either couldn't, that didn't, that didn't exist or that they couldn't have discovered with reasonable effort?
Unfortunately, I don't have the new language in front of me.
But, but, on, on five A four, we're dealing with the hearing after we have decided to rehear.
Yes, we're gonna rehear, right.
And I don't know of anything that the board of supervisors has done that restricts us from the benefit of hearing your arguments as to why something should be reheard. Or not why it should be reheared, but why we should decide it differently.
I, I think you're absolutely right, and I got sort of lost in, in where we were on the hearing, so this is the point where we've already decided to rehear it.
Yeah, right.
And so at that point, yes, it would be appropriate to be able to bring in new information. And so with that in mind, your additional sentence makes sense.
Okay, okay.
I was trying to say first time.
If you just leave Mr. Ladish's first sentence the way it is.
Yeah.
Which incorporates the provisions of this hearing procedures document, that incorporates section two, which incorporates all the timeframes for filing briefs and documents and so forth, it's all you need to do. You don't need your second sentence.
If people are sophisticated, that's fine with me, uh, you know, it's.
I mean, if that's the intent, once it's decided to rehear it, we basically are starting over and everybody gets to submit whatever they want within the timeframes that are prescribed, that's what your change does.
Yeah, and I think it's important though that, that the planning department is, is versed so that people say, okay, I agree to rehearing, and here comes our, our, our briefs and stuff on that, that they're not turned down or turned back, it, it, I, I agree with you that it's not necessary, it might be helpful to have it in it.
You and I are such different people. I love flexibility.
Are you just not figuring that out?
Yes, I am just figuring this out, I love flexibility and you're tying people into knots. So they cannot step outside of your word is, and it's, it's so restrictive that I hate it. What is wrong with being flexible?
It's almost like you litigated for a long time.
My gosh.
How many times, how many times have you been hit by people saying, well, I read this this way, or I read it that way?
And you know what, that's good because it opens us up to looking at a broader picture and not being so closed.
Well, since.
I think people should have the option of us looking at a broader picture and not being closed minded, so we're gonna teach you how to open up a little bit.
Commissioner Rooster has pointed out that the same result happens if we don't have the sentence, if it makes you happy.
It makes me happy, I love it.
And we'll be sure to, um, work with any appellate or applicant, in the rare instance something actually does get reconsidered. Um, and I think in my thirty year plus career, I think I've seen it happen once, um, that we'll make sure they understand that they can have.
Do everything they could did before, basically, okay, great, take out that sentence.
Good job, thank you for all your hard work.
I'm the flexibility.
The decision was Tim wanted to make me happy.
We're taking, we're making, right now, we're making.
He left out his whole second.
I believe we're, we're making Commissioner Ladish's suggested revision to the first sentence of five A four, but declining to adopt his added sentence.
Because it's unnecessary, it takes, the first sentence takes care of it, um, okay, and.
Did I make you happy? You got ninety percent of what you had on your sheet.
I was showing my flexibility and it was. Okay, five C, I have a suggestion to my own suggestion.
The meeting has definitely gone on too long.
He's making flexible.
This, uh, Sarah pointed out, I think it was Sarah, that.
Don't blame this on me.
That, uh, down at the, well, I'm gonna read it through. Whenever a request is made by a commissioner by section five A one, and whenever the planning commission grants a request for reconsideration, the planning director shall notify the clerk of the board of supervisors. So I'm suggesting we insert clerk of the, so that the planning director isn't notifying the board as soon as possible in.
Why, why are you?
Why are you making this so?
Why are you putting in section V A one?
What, wait a minute, what, I thought I'm, I'm on five C, so I'm not sure where.
Why are you referring to V A one?
It's five, he's referring to five A one, but I have, I, I do maybe think that that first clause is unnecessary, I mean, or. I mean, a commissioner has to make a request under 5A1 in order for the Planning Commission to correct-
Yes, but what I'm saying is that I think we ought to keep the Board of Supervisors informed of every step along the way of what's going on with regard to the reconsiderations. So it's clear, if a request is made by a planning commissioner, there's going to be at least a consideration of whether we're going to reconsider. You know, if I were-
Even if that doesn't end up happening.
If I were on the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to know what's going on so that I might want to, I might want to continue the matter before the Board of Supervisors, if that's cooking in the, in the Planning Commission.
Shouldn't it be referring to if the Planning Commission decides to hear?
No, that's, that's the second part.
That's how it's as drafted, I think, is only if the Planning Commission actually grants the request for reconsideration that a commissioner has made. I think what Commissioner Ladish is suggesting is that if he merely is, let's say he's going to ask the rest of the commission to rehear something, that that should be communicated to the clerk.
Well, then I guess it should be or rather than and.
Well, I think, I think on both, I mean, you know, so I, I make a request. We consider it. If it's, if we grant reconsideration, they ought to be letting know of that, too.
But I think the, the point is that if you're granting, the, the only way to grant the reconsideration is for a commissioner to propose it.
Yeah, but it's two steps, and it might be separated by a month's time.
Yes, it would be.
And, and that's what I'm, I'm just, I just think we ought to keep the Board of Supervisors informed.
But I guess what I, what I'm, as I read this, where it says with and, it means you have to, you have to do both.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah.
And which is why I say if, if the commission is inclined to make that suggested change, my suggestion is that the clerk of the Board be notified so that-
Yeah, oh yeah, I didn't mean to pin on you, any, the other, the clerk of the, clerk of the.
That's pretty-
We solve your problem, Peter, by putting a comma. Well, there is already a comma.
There is a comma.
After 5A1.
It just seems to be-
So it's not a consecutive-
So we do it, we notify them that there is a proposal to reconsider.
Right.
And then we notify again that, yes, they-
A thumbs up.
Yeah, okay.
We're doing it, yeah. Okay.
I don't know why we'd have to put that in our procedures. I would seem to think our planning director would be making sure that the Board of Supervisors know. That's kind of weird.
If you put the or in, it would be up to you whether to give any notice.
They're just gonna read that. They're just gonna know that.
We're the ones with the scrap.
That's just overkill.
Okay, so, so-
So are you done?
Well, I, if, if you're flexible enough to accept that last one, I-
I hate that last one. I think that if the, if whoever is running our meeting doesn't know, they need to let the supervisors know that we're gonna be doing a reconsideration. We have a problem with our director. We might should look at getting a new one.
It's a helpful reminder, because at least this director has a whole lot on their mind these days, and sometimes it's overlooked.
But are you really gonna go read our procedures to be able to tell yourself to do that, honestly? I mean, come on, whatever. Okay, yes, you can have it. If you think Peter needs to be told, and he's gonna go read our procedures.
I think, I think in the future, we may not have such a sterling director as we do right now.
Oh, are you getting rid of him?
Not mine.
Not me either.
So, well, I am, I am done, but I-
Oh, bless you.
Should we have some, did I say, the-
Public comment?
Should we have some public comment?
I would love some public comment.
Were, were there any other proposed edits by other members of the commission?
Mine got hit, so I'm good. You're good?
I'm always good, but-
Do you have any comments? I will have him be silent.
None whatsoever.
How about you? How about you?
I'm good.
Okay, so, do you have, you're recognizing a, are you recognizing a problem here? Everybody's good, but you bring us a book. Okay, let's go to public comment. Thank you for all your work, by the way.
You're welcome.
That was genuine and sincere. You're it.
60 seconds.
60 seconds? Sheekah. Ooh. At the discretion-
You're being mean today, Joe. Picking on me.
At the discretion of the chair, please take as much time as you need right now.
Ooh, I like that.
Remember, we have 1A9 that we haven't decided on yet.
She wants to go home, too. I'm not worried about it.
Well, believe me, we'll talk about 1A9. Okay, um, I think I have a letter here somewhere I wrote you yesterday.
We all read it.
Yeah, and you all read it, you all read it, promise?
I read every bit of it.
Okay, okay. So before we get to, let me see, I did have a few other minor, minor, minor things. So in the very, very first paragraph, I just wanted to reiterate a request I'd made before. The Calaveras County Planning Commission finds that adoption of specific procedures to be followed in hearings before the Planning Commission will help make the hearing process more uniform and efficient. And I still request you consider and add the word "fair." Make the process more uniform, efficient, and fair, since that is, you know, providing a thorough and fair hearing, it serves the intent of due process. And I just thought, you know, putting the word "fair" in there would just reinforce your intent for ensuring due process, and would benefit the county. So that's just-
I certainly don't want to be on record on not including "fair," but go ahead.
All right. Since that's what we're all about here. So that was my first suggestion. And then getting to what Commissioner Ladish called new Section 1A9, which was what we were suggesting also to re-submit the, or re-include the rebuttal by the public or stakeholders, or whatever way you want to call that. He put it as rebuttal by any member of the public who has spoken under Section 1A.
And you put "sir rebuttal" by a member of the public?
Yeah, whatever, you know, if whatever is clear to the rules and the procedures.
I just thought "sir rebuttal," people might not understand, and we don't define "sir rebuttal" before we define the law.
Yeah, that's, that's true. The reason I put it in there is because it's in the board procedures. So if you read my letter, you will see that "sir rebuttal" is a term that's in the board procedures.
Because it's there doesn't mean it's right.
Well, it's in there, and it has been used by the chair. The chair used it.
Doesn't mean it's right.
It, it has been used in the past, and we think it's fair and a good hearing procedure. It is, you know, it does, it does, it does only apply to comments that came up in rebuttal, so it's not something that would go on forever. Often, appellants or applicants don't even use the rebuttal period because, you know, then it might trigger more rebuttals. So it's only used if there is a statement made that is an incorrect statement, that somebody feels that, you know, has been said about them or a fact. And if you read the letter, you see I searched through the whole, last year, Planning Commission appeals hearings, and "sir rebuttal," or whatever you would call it, public rebuttal, was not used. So it's not something that's taking up your time. People don't use it unless they need to use it. And when they need to use it, it's only because something was said that's incorrect, or slanders them, or is something wrong. And I've seen this in the past. I mean, that's how we got it in there in the first place, is there was an issue in a hearing where public rebuttal was not allowed, and an applicant or appellant said something that was slightly slanderous to a previous statement by the public, and they were not able to defend themselves. So there are instances, and I also want to point out that you're assuming that the appellant here is a, an applicant for a project or something. Often it is, as I think Lisa pointed out, it can be a member of the public. An appellant could be a member of the public. So the person that you're giving the last word here is the member of the public, if that's the appellant. So the developer of the property, who, whose project may be, he's got a lot of money involved in. So this appeal is appealing his project, and you're not giving him the opportunity to rebut something said in rebuttal. So, you know, you're trying to make this a one-sided thing, and it's actually something that benefits all sides of an issue. So I'm not sure if I'm explaining that very well.
I don't think if, if a person's project is being appealed by the public, he becomes a public speaker, it's still his project.
He is still a public speaker, though, and he's only allowed five minutes to talk in public speaking. And then if you're not allowing him a public rebuttal, then he can't rebut something that's come up during a hearing.
You're saying if, if, if a project is approved by the planning-
Yeah, the project or permit is approved, and it's appealed by a member of the public or a neighbor, which has happened in the past. It's happened a number of times. So then the, the project applicant is then a member of the public.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, I'm just saying the shoe's on the other foot sometimes.
There's a term that the lawyers are familiar with, and maybe everybody's heard it, real party of interest.
Right.
Maybe that ought to be the term, though.
That was-
That's the last word.
That's not working for me here at all, it's like-
I don't think it works, only because it may just be the lawyers who are used to using the word, and I don't know if-
Is that any worse than "sir rebuttal"?
No, that's also bad.
I don't use "sir rebuttal."
What if we all have the last?
No, I like, I like the wording "rebuttal by any members of the public," but Joe's absolutely right. That's what we're talking about, the real parties of interest here, whether it be a member of the public, or the project applicant, or whatever. They should have the opportunity to rebut incorrect information that's put out.
That's the key, is the incorrect or-
Right.
At least what seems to be misleading or fault or whatever.
Right, misleading or incorrect information. And then another point on that, I keep hearing the last word as being like, "Well, that's the end of the hearing, then there's nothing else that would be said." That's not what happens anyway, you know that. You continue to ask questions of people, okay? So, you know, after "sir rebuttal" or whatever, the commissioners keep asking questions of anybody they want to, the appellant, the applicant, and the members of the public. That's in the hearing procedures, and we talked about that. So that's not the last word. You keep going. If something comes up that you feel, "Well, that's, they shouldn't be able to say that, that's, they're having the last word," you can pursue that, and you can ask the appellant, "Can you clarify that? Is that right?" You know, so that's not the last word. You still have the rest of the hearing, and you haven't even closed the public hearing at that point, so you can still ask questions. That's in your procedures. Follow-up questions from commissioners, that's after rebuttal. Follow-up questions from commissioners to the applicant, appellant, staff, or members of the public. So that's your, your opportunity to clarify anything that comes up at that last moment. So that's my plea to just, it hasn't hurt anything, I'm saying. It's been in there since 2012. It's not overused. It hasn't taken up lots of your time. It has been used in the past, though, to rebut, you know, incorrect information. So I'd like you to consider that. I did have a couple other things, if, any more questions on that before we go on? Okay, under 1B, okay, 1B, "The Chair retains discretion to deviate from the prescribed order of events, et cetera, et cetera." Either under B or C, I'd just like you to consider that presenters may request additional time besides that five minutes if they are a party of interest, or if you don't like that term.
Where are you now?
I'm sorry.
1B.
1B, or possibly C, I'm just trying to figure out where this additional phrase might fit. There's examples of people, for example, a property owner next door to a cannabis grow, or a project applicant defending his project approval, where somebody might need more than that five minutes to make their case and present evidence.
So you're, are you, assuming if we don't put in something like that, they won't ask for it, as for the chair to exercise-
Well, that's what I'm saying. You don't have anything that says people can ask for information, for more time. So I'm just suggesting that you put "presenters may request additional time" somewhere in these procedures, so that they're not absolutely, absolutely limited to five minutes, and they know that that's an option to ask for if they-
So instead of "sir rebuttal," we say-
No, not instead.
Instead of "sir rebuttal," we say, well, but now you're asking for three different times to keep speaking, so it never ends. So instead of putting "sir rebuttal" in, we say the public would have an opportunity to come up and request more time, right? No?
If that could be anywhere in the-
That could be a gateway to the rebuttal.
If, if you meant that to apply to anywhere in that order of events. I was just, I guess I was just narrowly applying it to the public five-minute speaking period.
Oh, I see where you're at. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's why it says "The Chair retains discretion to deviate from the above." It covers all, all points.
Uh-huh. But you don't have anything-
I don't think anyone has ever been hesitant to ask for more time.
For once, Colleen-
Well, people, a lot of people don't know that, though. There's a lot of people that are very timid that this is the first time they are coming to a hearing. Yeah, somebody that has more evidence, a neighbor. I know a neighbor that came up to a hearing recently, and they were afraid to speak. I mean, people are, they're not confident. You know, they're not confident, so you have to let them know if they, if they can't ask you.
Whatever.
So I just, it wouldn't hurt anything if presenters may request it. You don't have to grant it. It's just something to-
Okay, next thing on your, your-
Okay, next thing on my list here.
I'm making notes, so that we're gonna go back over your three requests that you have on the list so far.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, let me see. Okay, I had a question. I guess this is, this applies to how the public and everybody, this is under written comments, okay. Written comments, A, B, C, D. Unless written submissions are provided to the clerk of the Planning Commission early enough to be included in the published agenda, which I think you just changed to two weeks.
Yeah, you might go to, right.
Pardon me?
Because, I mean, now, now it's gonna say unless documentary submissions.
I'm just reading the, what was our draft here, so I'm, I'm sorry. This is where my notes are, so I can only go to this.
Right, no, go ahead, Colleen.
Okay, so that's the section I'm under. So unless we provide any written submissions to the clerk, basically two weeks before the hearing date now, right? The party submitting the document must bring at least 12 copies of the written submissions to the Planning Commission hearing. I'm still confused about that. If the planning commissioners have had two weeks to get these documents from the clerk, why would we need to bring hard copies duplicating it for the planning commissioners?
If you didn't submit it here, if you didn't submit your documents in time to make it to-
The agenda packet.
Right.
I understand.
Then you, if you're gonna be bringing your documents here, you would want to bring 12 copies, so that everybody up here gets a copy, and if there's interested parties sitting in the public, they would get a copy.
But this would also apply to the things you submit on the Monday-
Well, that's what I'm, I'm talking about. If I'm timely filing something by Monday at 5:00 PM, why do I still need to bring 12 copies to the commissioners if I've timely filed, and the clerk has had time to forward to you all?
That makes sense.
That's a question we should discuss.
We should discuss that.
Because I, I hate using my printer cartridges up and having to throw them away all the time. Okay, thank you, thank you. Let me see, where am I? Oh, and I just, this was just a comment in support of, I just had this from before, that you wanted documentation of the screen views of your telephones and computers, that I felt that was only appropriate if you had written documentation of that. So thank you for changing that. And the very last thing, thank you. Just a minor question again. This is under general public comment period D. And I know you've changed the wording of this, I'm going by the original. Neither the planning commissioner staff is obligated to respond to questions asked by the public during the general public comment period, and neither may respond to issues not on the agenda. Comments should be directed to the commission, not staff.
But that, that's been moved up to 4A, that last sentence. Comments shall be directed-
Well, I think what she's getting at is there are times whenever public commenters Well, I think what she's getting at is there are times whenever public commenters ask staff questions.
That's my point, I don't care what-
And so her concern is that they're not allowed to ask staff.
Right.
And I think, Colleen, where that's boiling down, and we've been pretty liberal in here about this, what it boils down to is that we, if you've seen it, we get some pretty heated people at public comment, and they turn to lash out at the other public members instead of addressing the commission. So I think that the whole intent of that was to keep people addressing the commission, and not striking out at public members, sitting out to the left and the right of them, because we've seen it happen-
Or at staff.
-few too often.
Right, I know.
And also, I think, this is not an opportunity for a back-and-forth between staff, and I mean, if you address the commission with a question, and the commission says, oh, that's a really good question, staff, can you answer that?
Right.
That's what I would, you know, would think would happen.
Okay.
I would never, yeah.
That was, that's what I was wanting clarification, because I often have questions for the planning director.
Absolutely.
And if the planning commission thinks it's appropriate, then I guess they can ask the planning director then. Okay, that was my question on that, thank you.
Okay, so, is there any other public comment?
Do you guys see that sign? They're gonna drive away 100 miles, and they're, you're slower on that walker than you are your car. Who's driving? Oh, Tim's driving home, I can't tailgate you.
I don't need a ride.
There's no way I'm trying to tailgate Tim. Okay, on this rebuttal thing, in this day and age of technology, I really think you should do the second rebuttal, because if somebody comes up here and says something, the other person comes up and rebuts it, and it's not accurate, the other person has the possibility of getting on a device and pulling up actual stuff, whatever it be code or whatever, and come back up here and read it, and set the record straight. Without the second rebuttal, they do not have that option, and you may not have the chance to hear the actual code. Next, on the one that you guys were just talking about, with public comment and people responding, if somebody responds to a public comment, it should, you know, whether it's Mr. Lattish, or the chair, or whoever, only one person can respond to that person through the whole public comment. If you have two people responding directly to the person, then you're in trouble with the Brown Act. As weird as it sounds, that's true, because then you're making it almost an agendized item. You can only have one person responding. The comment from the public can respond, you know, can have his question answered by Mr. Lattish, by the chair, by Mr. Maurer, but then through that whole public comment, whoever responded the first time is the only person that can talk to that public.
But even with that, with one of us responding when the other four are present, don't we have a Brown Act problem?
No. Lisa, put it down.
It's nice to have authority, I would say.
No, we ran, we ran into this truthfully in CCWD, when we started to have multiple people getting into discussions with the public. And we were informed that, yes, one person can respond, but one person only. If you have two people responding, that is a Brown Act violation, because it's a public comment.
Okay, don't anybody else respond to her, because he talked to her. Seriously.
No, I'm, I know.
I know, but what I'm gonna tell you is that I think that we need to look that up and verify that information, not just take it from the public, and then we can come back. If that correction needs to be made after it's looked up, then we can come back, but we don't have anything in front of us that says that's inaccurate, or it's correct, or, so I would like to research that before we hammer it out.
Well, and I think the broader issue, too, is during general public comment, and I, you know, we all know this, but there shouldn't be sort of a discussion or back-and-forth or responding when it comes to those non-agendized items, you know, they can certainly answer a brief informational question, but once you get into discussion, then that's not something that should ever be happening by any number of commissioners.
Well, this is why I, I kept it, we can't say anything, but we could turn to Peter and say, do you know of a case that's coming up, or something that's, or-
And we've done that a lot.
Yeah, I just, I just thought maybe it was, be good to have the protection of enforced silence, but-
And I think once we start adding additional things that are issues of other laws, we sort of open the door to, well, what if that law changes? And so, you know, I think it's, it's assumed that we have to comply with the Brown Act, and, you know, if we start putting provisions of the Brown Act in our procedures, then where do we stop?
Right.
Well, then we, we should be instructed, by county counsel, I suppose, whether, you know, if, if what she says is an accurate interpretation, application of the Brown Act, we should know that, so that if one responds-
Right, not, not to put it in the procedures, but just as a point of knowledge.
Right, we just need to know it.
And Julie has done that.
And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will try to be faster going back to my chair.
No, relax, see you plenty of time. Okay, so I'm gonna take this back, and bring it to you all to comment on, let's start with first with Colleen's word fair in the very first, the sentence there, the Calabres Planning Commission finds that adoption of specific procedures to be followed in hearings, planning commission will help make the hearings process more uniform, fair, and efficient. Are you all okay with adding the word fair?
No.
Okay.
I am, but it implies that there was something unfair earlier. I would be hard-put to point to anything here that makes it more fair than it was before, with the possible elimination, if it happens, of rebuttal by the public, which I think would, but we're not there yet. Don't think we need it, don't like the implication.
Okay, I'm gonna just bring your attention to item I, A, nope, let's go to IB.
One B.
One B.
I, I would like to suggest something that came out of a comment that Colleen made about the fact that sometimes you have an appellate that is different than an applicant, and maybe we should add something under one A, or, between one A, four, and five, is that, an applicant presentation, if the applicant is different from the appellate, and provide them the same amount of time that the appellate has.
See, that's what I feel. I am very good with that.
Ah.
I'm very good with that.
I think that's a good way to do it, I think it could also be handled on a case-by-case basis, if this arises with the discretion that the chair has, but I don't see a problem with your suggestion.
So, either way this has been written, we've spent so much time on appeals these days, who have been the appellate, that we've sort of forgotten, in the past, that most of the appeals are of an approval by staff, that neighbors or community groups don't like, and so that the appellate is different than the applicant.
That's right.
So, if you're okay with that.
Do you see a place where we can do that in a couple of words?
What is that?
Well, I think we just add a new number five, and renumber everything, we would just add another-
Number five to which?
One A.
One A.
And then, I still wanna go back to one B.
But that's, let's go to, but, just what, what was, what would be your, your language?
Applicant presentation, if applicant is different from the appellate.
So would four just be appellate's presentation?
No, I think it should be-
Well, because, this is just for appeal, so if there's no, if it's just a, I would leave it as it is, because if we're, if we're just a regular hearing, and say it's parcel map, it would be the applicant's presentation.
Right.
And then we would just skip over the next one, because we don't have a separate appellate, or a separate applicant.
Okay, great.
And it's a little confusing, but I think it works.
So, so, give it to us again, exactly what you propose?
Just leave it the way it is.
Applicant, so, a new number five.
Oh.
Applicant presentation, if different from, if applicant is different from appellate. So if there's an appeal, the appeal goes first, then the applicant gets to present his or her side of the argument, and then we go to public comments.
And that's 15 minutes on number five?
Yes. So staff presentation, appellate, applicant, public.
But then number four, are we saying?
Four stays the same.
So we have the word applicant in there also.
So in the event that it's just a, an application before you start an appeal?
How about starting your number five as it, with the if applicant is not, I think it, I think that makes it clearer.
If applicant is not-
If applicant is not appellate.
Comma, applicant's presentation.
Applicant's presentation, fifteen minutes.
Let me, can I interrupt a question?
Please.
When we ask our questions, do we actually wait till the public comments are done, and then start answering?
No, we, we go from-
I thought it's after the staff.
We go presenter, and then the applicant or appellate, and then we ask our questions of them, yes.
So, so now we're changing that, dropping number eight all the way down?
Well, but then the public comes in, and they, they go through theirs, and then we come back and do rebuttals, and then we ask questions again, once they're all come over.
And that's the first question.
No, but they, the, one A is, is commissioners, you have to, you leave out the part about uninterrupted, may ask questions of staff, public, after the bus speaker has-
Not, not interrupting him, that's the point.
Right, yeah, yeah, and then not interrupting, I fully, I fully recognize, especially after watching the tape, that that's a great thing. No matter how they do it, unless we're in court.
All right. So, let's go-
But, but back to fair, I mean, let's try to-
You know what, I'm chairing right now, not you.
I'm sorry.
Back to fair. I've been trying to give back to that for five minutes.
So I, I think there's two ways to address this, that, we're saying that make the process more uniform and efficient, I think that's where Commissioner Rooster, making it more fair, it, what he's saying is, it's fair now, we could delete the word fit, more-
More, that's a bad word.
And just make the process uniform, efficient, and fair.
Yeah.
There's a desire to put fair in there, and I think that might cover the concern that Kelly has.
I think so.
That would be okay.
Yeah, all right, good.
Great, well, you got fair.
All right.
Strike more.
Okay, you're done, Colleen.
Uniform, fair, and efficient.
Okay, so, I was going to point to one B, because I really liked the language, well, to ensure a full, fair, and efficient hearing, is the language there, and was going to suggest, but we deleted the word more, and you're all happy, so we can leave that out of it now.
Okay.
Okay, going to the 12 copies under two D.
Let's see, what about, are we gonna-
What about the rebuttal?
The rebuttal thing?
Oh, I already written that off in my head, so we need to poll you all. Do you want to do the rebuttal? Let's poll this board here now.
Well, I have some-
Ser rebuttal, excuse me.
I have some comments on that. One, the point was made that the Board of Supervisors rules do provide for it, assuming they do, maybe when they see what we do, they'll change their rules.
See?
To be more for, fair, uniform, and efficient, as we are just doing. The point was made that the member of the public could feel abused by something that's said in rebuttal, so could the applicant or appellate.
Correct, and they'd be the meat.
Feel abused by something that's said in ser rebuttal, if we can call it that.
Agreed.
We've already fixed the problem, the issue that was raised about maybe the appellate or the applicant is a member of the public, that's, that's already been taken care of. To provide for this sort of ser rebuttal, it is the last word as a right, and the, to say it's not the last word is, is not correct, because the only reason it's not the last word is if somebody on the commission decides to ask some questions, otherwise it is. Why, okay, that's it on that.
Okay, how do you, Commissioner Sis, how do you feel this afternoon? You have, like, 11 minutes, and we have to be out of this room.
I think that we should just leave it the way it is.
Okay, Commissioner Vachelli.
I agree with, Commissioner, do I have to call you Commissioner? Yes, Ms. Fisk, yes, leave it as it is.
Okay, so one, two, three, four.
Well, I mean, that's obvious, you know, what the result is.
Okay, so we can, we don't have to keep going over that, okay? And then we are, I have a note about the, the request more time for public, we addressed that, correct? Because we said the public could just ask us, and the chair has the discretion to continue.
Right.
Then I have the 12 copies that was brought up about, that was an issue.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I was, I was concerned about other things in there, I wasn't endorsing the 12 copies, like, I don't know that we need that, I mean, if, when we get submissions that are submitted, I mean, maybe we ought to just change this, so that if they're submitted, they're requested to be submitted late.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you for just one second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because we're babbling, and you and I've already had this conversation. Annette, as administrative, and Peter, the reason for those 12 copies, we want your recommendation on this one, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, quick representative.
Tradition.
I feel if it's in the staff report, and it's included, and then the staff report goes out, there's no need to do it, but once we receive comments after the staff report goes, either they have to make them, or I have to make them.
Okay, so, with this was referencing, and what was being talked about out in the public was, why would they have to present you 12 copies if it's before it goes out?
We don't need to, if it's before.
So do you need better clarity on that?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think the question is, now that we require a submittal two days before the hearing, and we send them to you electronically, do we still need to have 12 copies made?
For the commissioners, that was the reason.
And public?
Yeah, but I mean, 12 copies-
See, 12 copies to me was if it's last minute, they're showing up here, and they're bringing something, but Annette, that's why we're looking to you for advice.
I, I was asking why the eight copies for commissioners and staff, because I've submitted them timely on Monday, then why do I need to submit hard copies for commissioners and staff?
Because Mike has said, it's gonna run out.
Because sometimes-
Oh, okay, okay, that, I just needed a reason, yeah.
Because sometimes people submit voluminous comments, and so forth, and if all I do is get them electronically, then I gotta print that out on my little bitty computer, which I hardly know how to run.
Okay.
And I can sit there and read, read it, but it's very helpful to have a hard copy, that's what people work off of, like me.
Okay, see, I'd never, I'd never heard commissioners want that before, I thought you were given hard copies, and I don't-
You do it, it's in a packet.
Pardon?
A letter that you submitted, because it had stuff in it that I wanted to retain, I printed it.
I printed it, your, your letter's here with me.
We get that stuff electronically.
And we print, everybody's, not just yours, so when you're worried about printing 12 copies, we're sitting here constantly printing, I don't get paid enough for that.
So you want me to bring you copies?
I want a raise.
You would rather me bring you copies?
I want you to petition for a raise.
Well, I mean, being realistic about it, I'm gonna print it anyhow, because I know our copies-
That's what I thought, I thought you all printed it anyhow, or you had it anyhow.
She didn't get by into that at all, I just lost.
So you-
I personally printed it.
Which, yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm going to print it.
So I guess I'm asking-
So I don't, I don't need another copy from you.
That's what I was, my feeling.
Only if it's last minute, it doesn't make it into the staff report, do we want the 12 copies.
Well, no, this wouldn't make it into the staff.
Well, that's what it says now.
But so I think the consensus-
The submission on the Monday, she makes a timely submission.
See, I can't, I can't comment on the staff report until I read the staff report, and then I comment.
She comments on that on, by 5:00 Monday.
Right.
We get it electronically.
Right.
Do we need her to bring a hard copy?
On the day of the hearing.
No, because I'm gonna have already printed it myself.
Exactly.
Right, so this really-
But Annette-
Well, depends on how-
And not all commissioners do.
Depends on how voluminous it is. If somebody gives me 200 pages, I'm not gonna print it.
Well, agreed.
Or E I R, or two, hands.
Well, and copies should be here for the members of the public as well.
And we need copies from members of the public.
I, I agree, I'm just asking about, do I need to print 12 of everything for-
How about a document more than five pages, or something of that sort?
How about?
Well, it just depends on what the topic is, I mean, there may be a lot of public that wants copies, and 12 may not be enough, you know, there may be a time when only two people take a copy, but I made 10 here, just in case. I think 12's a good number.
Not even if the commissioners don't need them?
Well, you may have one or two that do.
Okay.
But our problem is, is the voluminous one, and then, and we, I would have no problem in having something in here that in effect says, if the submission, timely under the rule that is the Monday at 5:00, is more than 15 pages, that the-
Yeah, but then you're conflicted now, so you, I can actually be the one way or another, we can have him do it, or we do it.
And, you know, what I was saying, is that we just think-
Colleen, if you've sent it to me before, don't print me a copy, I've already printed it for myself, he's gonna study it and print it. Now, you, you may wanna bring him a copy, because he doesn't have the technology, or, I, I just, I think you need to leave that number 12 in there, not particularly for you, but the public, or an attorney, or, because our issue is, is that the attorneys are smacking us with documents at the last minute, and they're not your two-page letter, they're pretty decent-sized documents, and those are the ones that we need printed. So, you kinda have an understanding of us, and we get you, but we have to have something in here, so that whenever we're dealing with other people in the public that are reading our procedures to understand how the, how it's gonna go that day, they need to have that number 12 in there for us.
But if somebody, if somebody submits a 50-page thing, it's at their jeopardy that I may not print it out?
Me, too.
I understand, okay.
But if it's in writing, it covers us.
I understand, I think, okay.
But I'm not gonna, I'm not, you can, you can count on the fact that most of us are probably gonna have printed, or at least read what you've put into an email to us, and if it's important, like this was, we all printed it, it's all in front of us.
How do you write nudge, nudge, wink, wink into a procedures document? I think you're going to have to submit 12 copies.
Okay, so, was that the...
So, the other aspect of this question then is, when, what is the deadline for that? We've got the, right now it's set the two weeks, so it's actually, if it's included in the packet, we will print it out, include it in the packet. If it's submitted between Friday, two weeks before, and the Monday...
The Monday a week and a few days after.
Well, the, you know, two days, or three days before the hearing.
Yeah, right.
Then, I'm, I'm just, I'm a little...
I think that any time the packet gets submitted, after we've already received our package, it's their responsibility.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So, as drafted, right?
Yeah, as drafted, okay.
Afraid so.
Okay. The only other thing that I'm seeing in here was, so we're leaving that, the only other thing I seen was members, they are having the last say, public members having the last say, and I think we've pretty much covered that, so, that was it?
Yep. Do you want me to just run through quickly, not, I won't read all the changes, just identify the numbers that we changed?
Perfect, yeah.
So, we changed the first paragraph, deleted more, added "fair," we added Commissioner Lattish's amendments to 1A3, 1A4, we added a new 1A5 regarding the applicant is different than the appellate. We modified 1B to A, 2B with some slight modifications from what Commissioner Lattish suggested, C, D, and E, 2G...
You just said 2B.
You said, I didn't, I don't have any changes to B.
There's no change.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, that was, I wrote down the wrong one, that's up. That was 1B.
So, 2A, 2C, 2D, and 2E?
Yes. 2G, we struck the third sentence, and then I think we're going to add another sentence, "A copy of the presentation shall be provided to the clerk of the, for the record."
Correct, and that's under I.
Where are you now?
E, I.
No, that's on G, well, that's a change to G.
Change to G.
Okay.
I...
And then we're adding an I, or, I'm sorry, adding on to I.
Adding on to I, as well as accepting the changes that Commissioner Lattish, Lattish had presented.
Wait, 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 I'm sorry, I'm getting confused, okay, so, when you're talking about I, where are you?
So...
So, 2I.
2I.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we made your changes, plus added that other sentence.
Yeah, right.
Or the phrase at the end. We modified 3A, and accepted the changes to 3B, and then we combined 3B and 3, the last sentence of 3C into 1. We deleted 3D. We modified 4A, as Tim suggested, with some modifications. We struck the middle phrase of 4D, and neither may respond to issues that are not on the We modified 5A4, it included Tim's suggestions, and we modified those somewhat, and the same with 5C. Did I catch everything?
That's what I can tell.
And I suggest you and Sarah compare notes.
We will.
We will.
Hopefully between the two of us, we got it right.
Okay.
So, so...
Motion?
Do, do you need a vote from us to approve of that document for procedures as amended? Do I need a motion, please?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 5-oh.
And we're going to get a new copy of it.
Yes, you will get a clean copy when it's all done.
I'll make a, I'll make you a...
Here, make sure.
Okay, so, now we have no study session, sorry, you guys. Commissioner reports, do any of you have anything you want to report out on?
No.
She's got to chill. Planning Director, report.
Working hard to get the final edits to both the dispensary and draft ban ordinance, and the report on EIR to you, as quickly as I can, hopefully by Monday, but I can't guarantee it, because Julie gets back on Monday, and no vacation goes unpunished, and I'm sure she will have a lot on her plate.
Now, I heard at lunchtime that we might have a couple of appeals on the calendar for the next meeting?
Yes, we'll have...
Is there anything to do, can we do anything about that?
They're on the 28th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're at the San Andreas Town Hall?
Can, can we start the hearing early for those, or something?
Well, we can just have those first, I'm hoping that they go pretty quickly, but...
I agree.
We are agendized at 9:00.
Okay, so they're agendized at 9:00, can we inform the public that we will not be starting the hearings for the EIR until probably 11?
We could put a note on our website where the agenda is, that there are two appeals before the, but I don't know how long those go, I mean, we've had some appeals that will last half an hour, and others that last for three hours.
I, I think it might be a good idea to make a specific note, so we don't have, you know, I don't want my head on the bike.
Yeah, because it took us until noon just to get through two appeals today.
I don't recommend that you promise a particular time.
No.
But just, you know, highlighting the fact that there are two appeals on the agenda that are going to be heard prior to.
I think so.
Can we make another change to this, to the procedures, and say anything more than one hour, you just drop to the next hearing?
Okay, so I have a recommendation on that, Commissioner Bocelli. Tim sits between you and I, and he tends to drag our hearings out, so if you get a stick and I get a stick, we can, we can, we can slow him down a little bit.
I've got the little handle for the chair.
[laughing].
He just dropped for a second.
I think if I could...
I am sorry.
Manager, if I could offer a suggestion on that, rather than try to engage in a debate with the applicant during their presentation, I mean, ask questions, clarifying questions, but wait for the debate and discussion after the public hearing is closed, and you start deliberating between yourselves. There's a lot of, I hear a lot of argument, and, you know, back and forth between the appellate and commissioners, that probably is better reserved for the, the discussion and deliberation, as opposed to a question and answer with the...
Okay, I'm telling you.
It's not just, not just this matter.
My argument was with the attorney.
Okay, but, but here's the, okay, so, we can do this.
Give them their 10 or 15 minutes, let them finish, ask clarifying questions, and then you can start making your argument.
His information gets stale after 15 minutes, and I don't know if it has to do